Okay, MTV. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council meeting for May 19, 2020, to order. And I would start with an announcement. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with State of California Executive Order N 2920, dated March 17, 2020. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference, with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at mountainview.legistar.com, on YouTube, at mountainview.gov/youtube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period for an item by signing up at mountainview.gov/CC-speakers. Any emails received by 5:00 p.m. today were forwarded to the City Council. Emails received after 5:00 p.m. and prior to the close of the public comment period for the agenda item will be read into the record by the city clerk, and any voicemail messages received will be played by the city clerk. All votes will be taken by roll call vote. Now, I'd like to ask the city clerk to proceed with roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Maticek.
Here.
Councilmember McAllister.
Right here.
Member Ramirez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kamay.
Here.
Mayor Abicoga.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All members are present. So we will move on to, actually, before we go to the consent calendar, it's not on the agenda, but in light of the new orders from the county, we were asked to have the city manager welcome to give an update on COVID-19. So welcome, city manager.
Thank you very much, mayor. Yes, appreciate the time just to give everyone an update on the changes that will be in place starting this Friday with the new modified order. So with this new modified order, it essentially brings us into Phase Two of the four phases that the governor has outlined for the state. And the additional activities that will be allowed starting this Friday are that retail stores may be reopened for sales, but only for curbside or outside pickup or by delivery. So customers are not allowed to enter into the retail stores. Those stores must have direct access to sidewalks or parking lots for those pickups. And of course, face masks are required for those businesses, both for employees and customers. And businesses that support retail stores, such as manufacturing warehouses or any logistical operations, may also resume. In terms of the carp raids, or birthday brigades, as they have also been called, those are now permitted, as long as social distancing protocols are maintained. And outdoor museums, historical sites, and publicly accessible gardens are also allowed to reopen on Friday, but visitors are restricted to the outdoor areas. And the Public Health Officer essentially indicated that this move towards the next phase of reopening is really possible due to the progress that we've made regarding containment of the virus. But they also emphasize that residents are still required by the health order to stay at home as much as possible and follow all of the precautions that have helped our region make this progress to slow the spread of the virus. So we will continue to shelter in place and wear our face coverings and do everything that we have been doing over the last several weeks. And then lastly, I also wanted to provide a really quick update on the Together MV Portal, just because I wanted to note the increased number of donations that we've received. So as of today, we have received 625 donations at approximately $121,000. So I did want to acknowledge that generosity by our neighbors and the members of our community in contributing to the rent relief and small business efforts. And then I will have a much more comprehensive update at the next council meeting, but I did want to at least share the changes that will be in place this Friday, as well as the new donations to the portal. So with that, that's all I have. I appreciate it, mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a comment I wanted to make with the city manager, who was making an update. Last week, she updated about a lot of the stuff we're doing for the homeless and the RVs and so forth. And so recently, we received a letter from an advocacy group that represents three advocacy groups, stated, and they do great work. And I appreciate that they do go out there and support and work for the underprivileged, underserved, disability rights and so forth like this. But I don't think they fully understand what Mountain View as a city is doing for our populations of the RVs, the homeless, the needy. And they start off their letter writing, "We write to express concern related to the treatment of." And it bothers me a little bit because they didn't take, I don't think they took the time to realize the effort our council is doing, how much money we're committing to it, the time of staff that's involved with it, working with the CSA and working with the county. They should be sending us a letter saying, "Thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate it. Here's how you could tweak it." But instead, they come out and say, "Express their concerns." I know these times are frustrating for a lot of people, but I want to defend our city, our CSA and the county, for reaching out and taking steps that other cities haven't done. I'm curious if this group had sent a letter to other cities to say, "What are you doing for the RV people? What are you doing for the homeless? And are you doing as much as Mountain View?" So I just wanted to bring that out to say thank you to my council for doing things and for outside advocacy groups, get your facts together before you write us a letter. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I appreciate it. Councilmember McAllister, your comments. I agree. All right. Thank you, then. We will move on to our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions will be waived unless the council member requests otherwise. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Yes, Councilmember Maticek?
Thank you. I just want to comment on item 3.2. Did you want me to do that now?
Um, yes. Let me see if anyone else has any other items to pull? No? If not, then yes, if you could make your comments, that'd be great.
Thank you. So I wanted to comment on this item. We have been addressing a lot of very complex housing issues, some of which have been driven by new legislation. And I just want to make sure that every once in a while, we check in on our outside legal help to make sure we're getting the best help we can find and that we don't just let inertia sort of carry us in the path we are already on. I think it's always a good idea to check in and with the market and make sure we're doing what's right for the city of Mountain View. I know the city attorney and I are on the same page. We had a great conversation about this earlier today. But I just want to point out that it's always good to check in and make sure we've got the best legal help we can find. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And actually, I have to open this up for public comment. So if any member of the public on the line would like to provide comment on an item on the consent calendar, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. So are any members, attendees in the attendee box interested in speaking on an item on consent? If you can, hit the raise button, please, if you'd like to speak. And I don't see anyone. City clerk, do we have any other public comment?
We do not on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Great. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, mayor. I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar, including item 3.3, Adopt a Resolution of Intention to Vacate Public Easements at 1860 to 2159 Landings Drive, to be read in title only. Further reading waived, and set a date for a public hearing to consider the vacation for June 23, 2020. And I think that's the only item that requires formal reading for a resolution.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hicks?
I was just going to second.
Great. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez, second by Councilmember Hicks. Councilmember McAllister, do you have comments?
Uh, no comments. I just want to clarify that I will be voting down on 3.2 and yes on the rest.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Maticek.
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister.
Yes, except for 3.2, no.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kamay.
Yes.
Mayor Abicoga.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. So motion carries seven, zero, with no abstentions except for item 3.2, which has one no vote. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to oral communications from the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the raise hand button if you're in the attendee box. Anyone wishing to speak on a non-agenda item? I don't see any. City clerk, do we have any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Uh, ma'am, I'm just looking for one attendee who registered for non-agenda items, but I do not see, uh, but I do not see her on the line, so. No, thank you. We're good. Thank you.
There's three callers, phone callers. Are any of those possibly?
I don't have the information about the phone callers. But if there is someone on the line by phone, they would be pressed star nine if they'd like to speak now.
Okay, great. Okay, last call. If not, I will close public comment or oral communications and move on to item five, public hearing. 5.1, The Row House Development at 1555 West Middlefield Road. And our presenter, I believe, is Margaret Netto and Stephanie Williams. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Margaret Netto. The item before you tonight is 1555 West Middlefield Road, a row house project.
I'm sorry, Ms. Netto, before you continue, I did have an announcement on this project. We are offering Spanish translation, which is available in Zoom. And I'd like to ask Elena Garcia from our community outreach team to make a brief announcement about the translation.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elena Garcia, y voy a proporcionarles interpretación. Si es que lo ocupan y están en Zoom, por favor vayan al bajo de su pantalla y van a ver una bandera para el español. Por favor oprímala y podemos seguir la presentación en español. Gracias.
Thank you. And I also need to ask if any of the councilmembers wish to make any disclosures such as contacts with the applicant or site visits. I will disclose that I have met with the applicant. Any other councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember McAllister?
I have talked to them on the phone. Yes, made contact with them also.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
I met with the applicant via Zoom.
Councilmember Ramirez?
I also met with the applicant via Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
I traded email with the applicant.
Great. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I had a phone call with them.
Great.
Oh.
Vice Mayor, did you have a disclosure?
I did. I want to disclose that I met with the applicant via Zoom and visited the site.
Great. Thank you. All right. Sorry about that. Ms. Netto, please continue. Thank you.
Sure. Again, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Margaret Netto. The item before you tonight is 1555 West Middlefield Road, a row house project. The approximately 5.44-acre site is located on the south side of West Middlefield Road between Revlon Street and San Pio Way. The site is currently developed with two-story apartment buildings consisting of 116 units, known as the Meadowwood Apartments. Besides general plan amendment, I mean, general plan designation is medium intensity residential, and the zoning designation is R3 multiple-family residential. The proposed project is to redevelop the site with 115 ownership row house units. The proposed layout is configured to provide an activated street presence with individual front entries along West Middlefield, San Ramon, and San Pio Way, and a common open space for residents in the approximately center of the site. Pedestrian through block connections provided from Middlefield Road to San Ramon Avenue. Here's an architectural rendering of the site from Middlefield Road. The proposed Spanish cell architecture of the development includes stucco, exterior finishes, tile roofs, metal railings, balconies. Units are differentiated through massing varied roof forms, projection offsets, porch elements, and exterior materials and colors. The site's zoning designation is R3-2 and allows the maximum of 115 units on the site. While the general plan's designation prescribed a range of 13 to 15 units to the acre, actual density of individual sites is determined by the R3 density in the zoning code, which is consistent with the general plan density range. The proposed development complies with all the row house standards, and no exceptions are requested. Staff has been asked to clarify how CEQA addresses the issue of displacement under the population and housing section of the initial study. We wanted to note three key issues in this analysis. CEQA analyzes the physical impacts on the environment resulting from the project and is not purely socioeconomic impacts. The second issue is whether there is a need, there needs to be a threshold of significance for each item studied in CEQA. How does they determine whether there is a significant impact? A legal agency has substantial discretion to decide what kinds of thresholds are most appropriate for its jurisdiction. And for any particular project, it can formally adopt thresholds, or it could use them on a case-by-case basis. A threshold of significance can be quantitative or qualitative, and in this case, the issue was discussed qualitatively. In the case of displacement, we review two issues. Consistent with CEQA, the analysis reviewed the potential of this project to displace a substantial number of existing population or reduce units such that it would necessitate the construction of replacement housing elsewhere. The project would reconstruct just one less unit than the housing it would replace. Therefore, the reduction of one unit was considered, was considered, would not consider a substantial amount. Secondly, per CEQA, the analysis also looked at the potential of the project to displace existing population to the extent it would necessitate the construction of housing elsewhere. Based on the amount of rental housing currently available in the city, including the number of SFR units, the analysis concluded that the displacement would not necessitate construction of housing elsewhere. Therefore, the environmental analysis determined that with implementation of the proposed mitigation measures, all impacts of the proposed project would be mitigated to less than significant level. The 115 existing apartment units on site are covered under the city's community stabilization and fair rent housing and tenant relocation assistance ordinance. The applicant is also offering enhanced trail benefits, which is beyond what is required. Neighborhood outreach meetings were held on December 11, 2019, and January 21, 2021. The project was reviewed by the DRC on January 22, 2020, where the DRC provided recommendation for approval. Provisions were made to the project based on DRC direction and are reflected in the proposed plans. The project was reviewed by the zoning administrator and subdivision committee on February 12, 2020, where it was recommended for approval. Therefore, on this slide, staff recommends approval of this project. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is also here to make a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Netto. And yes, I believe Mr. John Hickey from Summerhill Homes is the applicant speaker. And we will have up to 10 minutes. Unfortunately, we're not able to show the time on the screen when we share the screen, so our city clerk will let you know when time is up. So welcome, Mr. Hickey. Please feel free to start when you're ready. Can you please, there you go.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
You are? Thank you. Sorry, still getting used to the technology. Good evening, Mayor Abicoga, Vice Mayor Kamay, and councilmembers. I'm John Hickey, Director of Entitlements and Planning for Summerhill Homes. I'm pleased to present our proposed project this evening and request your approval. To begin, I'd like to thank Margaret Netto for her professionalism and expertise on this project. She's been a tremendous pleasure to work with throughout. We're pleased to bring you a new ownership housing project that's fully consistent with the general plan, the zoning standards, and the row house guidelines. The site's in a great location, just a short bike ride to the major employers in North Bay Shore, East Wiseman, and downtown Castro Street. In addition, for young families, the site is just a short walk from Thurakoff and Crenston schools. As Margaret mentioned, the project will provide 115 new row homes for individual ownership. The site plan is designed to be pedestrian-friendly, with front doors and stoops facing shared landscape areas or facing outward to the neighborhoods. In addition, the project will feature a central quarter-acre open space with built-in grills, casual seedings, and shade trellises to give residents a place to gather. We believe this is the right time to redevelop the site. The existing apartment complex was built nearly 50 years ago, and the buildings, although well-maintained, are nearing the end of their useful life. Like many older apartment complexes, the units don't have fire sprinklers. The complex was built before the California Energy Code was even adopted, so the buildings lack modern energy efficiency. The water pipes are old and corroded, and the owners must regularly hunt down and repair leaks. The boilers, too, are old and far from the units, so water goes to waste while tenants wait for hot water to get to the tap. And the buildings need costly earthquake safety upgrades. In addition, the existing apartment complex doesn't meet current requirements for guest parking. In fact, it doesn't have any guest parking, unlike the proposed project, which will have 44 guest spaces. And I also want to point out that the existing complex has four driveways along West Middlefield, and the proposed project won't have any, which, in discussions with staff, staff was supportive of because there's a bike lane along West Middlefield, and it will make, the elimination of the driveways will make the bike lane much safer. One of the city's general plan goals, as you know, is to provide more opportunities for homeownership. This project will help the city meet that goal with a mix of new three- and four-bedroom homes. Excuse me. Every home has a two-car garage with space for bike storage, and the project will also provide 44 parking spaces for guests, plus 20 guest spaces for bikes. The project will also include a new public path across the site for the convenience of the neighbors in Rex Manor. In addition, the project will contribute more than $5 million to the city's affordable housing fund. Our project features the latest in environmentally sustainable construction. We've made the project 100% electric, meaning no natural gas heating, and all water heaters and other appliances will operate on clean electric power. The project has been designed to achieve a rating of The project has been designed to achieve a rating of Greenpoint Silver. Every garage will have either a Level 2 EV charger or be Level 2 EV-ready to meet future demand. We'll also install solar PV panels on all the buildings. We recognize that tenant displacement is a concern, and we've worked closely with the city's consultant, ARWS, to fully implement the city's relocation assistance program. In fact, we've gone substantially beyond what the ordinance requires. We've increased the income limit by $5,000 so more households can qualify for assistance. We're providing more than $8,300 to each special circumstances household, even more than what will be required for future projects under the new TRIO amendments. We've given notice to all households a full year in advance of the date that they need to move out, and we've waived the 30-day notice requirement so that residents can move as soon as they find a new apartment. With the help of ARWS, we're also providing one-on-one assistance for households that need a little extra help looking for a new apartment. In addition, in response to the uncertainties associated with the COVID virus, we've decided to offer all residents a three-month grace period, which will allow tenants in good standing to remain until February 1st, 2021. Now, the grace period will have a significant impact on the cost and the schedule for the project, but we're offering it in response to the comments and concerns expressed by the council and the community. Our project offers new environmentally sustainable ownership housing for the city, and we're delivering it with a level of care for the tenants that substantially exceeds the city's requirements for the project. We respectfully request approval of our zoning compliant project this evening. Our consultants and the Summerhill team are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll bring this back to council for questions. Are there any council members with questions for either staff or the applicant?
Yeah, this, sorry, had trouble with the mute. This is a question for staff. Is there any way that displaced tenants can be given priority on our waitlist? How would that work?
I'm happy to answer that question. I do know that the council in the past, sorry, the council in the past has indicated that they would like preference given to BMR tenant, I mean, to tenants who have been displaced. And I could, I don't know precisely how that's going to work, but we can certainly give the council, send them an email letting them know. But I do know that we folded that into our BMR lineup.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, thanks. How many bedrooms were at the old apartment complex, and how many bedrooms are going to be now with the new townhouses?
Sorry, Councilmember McAllister, I'm still not sure whether, when I'm audible and when I'm not. The existing project has 92 one-bedroom apartments and 16 two-bedroom apartments, for a total of approximately 140. And the, the new proposed project will have a combination of three- and four-bedroom homes, 374 total bedrooms.
Okay. So we're more than doubling the number of bedrooms. Okay. And this is either for the applicant or for the staff? I received some emails. People were concerned that the housing market, rental market was hard to approach or get into, and I made some inquiries, but I wonder if staff or the applicant have heard, as now that shelter in place has settled down for a while and they relaxed the requirements for showing apartments, has the rental market come back sort of somewhat back to normal on showing units and renting units?
I'll respond to that, Councilmember McAllister. I did get in touch with the developer, and we've talked with housing staff as well, and to see what we're seeing with, with our consultants who help with relocation. What they're indicating is that, yes, because of the COVID issue, many tenants themselves are not venturing out. However, to go and look at apartments, however, the apartment rent owners are offering virtual tours, just like the real estate agents are, and that's currently in place. Also, we've heard from the developer that summer may be a good time to look for rentals because, obviously, with the, with the new instructions for the shelter in place, we will probably see more people venturing out and looking at rental apartments. And they also note that rents are coming down, and they're down about 5% currently.
Okay, thanks. I also, Kevin, maybe you talked with Katia, that we had 55 heritage trees there, and I know from your arborist report, you're replacing 14 trees with 36-inch box, and I was wondering, what are the possibilities trying to get this property up to full foliage that you would increase the number of 36-inch box, gallon boxes to accelerate the canopy?
Councilmember McAllister, it's a good question. So I don't know if you're aware, but currently there aren't any street trees along the perimeter of the site, along the frontage, on any of the three public streets. We've taken a look at your request, and we're pleased to be able to say that, yes, we would recommend upsizing the street trees along the frontage to 36-inch box. That's actually 63 trees would be upsized. Now, I would say that we'll need to confirm with Public Works and the City Arborist to make sure that those trees will all be, won't conflict with the, with the utilities when they go in, but we anticipate that in, in most cases, it will be possible to install the, to plant.
Great, that's, that's greatly appreciated. Okay. And this is for staff, and it's sort of, this brings up something, but it's not applicable really to this project, but it reminds me of the paid parking lieu fees. Because they're putting in the same units or equivalent, they don't have to pay any parking lieu fees. But I know we brought this up on some other projects. Will that particular item, parking lieu fees, be coming back to us in the future? I thought we were going to be discussing that fairly soon.
Councilmember, it will be coming to the council after the summer. I don't have the specific month, but I do know that CSD is working on it, along with community development.
That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Manichek, and then Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you. So a lot of my questions have been asked, so just one more on the trees. In the staff report, it says the tree canopy coverage is going from 16% to 18%. But I was wondering, does that include the street trees or not? And if it doesn't, what would the tree canopy coverage be if the street trees were included?
Actually, it does include the street trees, and it would be 20% because at full maturity, the trees would be 18%, and then there's still 2% of the existing trees. So the total canopy will be 20%. Thank you.
So it's going from 16 to 20?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick questions. So first, under, I know the state law allows conversion of garages into ADUs without replacement parking, and I recall there was, there was a limitation. So under state law, how many garages would, would hypothetically or theoretically be able to convert into ADUs?
Stephanie, do you have that information? If not, we might have to confer, council member, and get back to you in a, in a few minutes.
Yes, let me, let me look that up, and I'll get back to you.
May I, may I speak for just a moment on that subject?
If you have an answer, yes.
I do, actually, because the question was put to us, and, and we looked into it because it was, it was something we did not have an immediate answer to. In fact, first of all, just so you know, we always include in our CCNRs a requirement that the garages be reserved for vehicles, they not be used for storage, so that they, you'll be able to fit two cars in the garage at all times. Now, I think what Councilmember Ramirez was concerned about is that despite that, in the context of single-family homes, that isn't necessarily a restriction that can be enforced, but in the context of row homes such as these, that provision in the CCNRs is fully enforceable, so there won't be an opportunity, even if, there won't be an opportunity to convert the, I'm sorry, it's not just, yes, so there won't be an opportunity to convert the garages into ADUs and lose those parking spaces.
Well, I follow a question to that. I remember this, this came up in the planning commission hearing regarding the ADU modifications, and I think a planning commissioner had asked in the written questions to staff in advance in the meeting whether the CCNRs would be able to preempt state law. And I, I thought the answer was no. So can we confirm whether the provision in the CCNRs would actually be able to prevent a homeowner from converting a garage into an ADU?
Councilmember Ramirez, I can likely answer that question. I think the answer to the question about whether the city can require that in the CCNRs, the answer is no. The city cannot require it because the city cannot require replacement parking for ADUs when they're converted. However, if the owners themselves choose to restrict in their own CCNRs and prevent garages from being converted into ADUs as a private agreement, that's a separate issue and not something the city would require. And I think that's what Mr. Hickey's talking about.
I appreciate that, but it's different from my recollection of what staff had shared with the planning commission. I think it'd be worth corroborating because there theoretically, you know, there may be a pretty significant parking impact if, I can't remember if it's 20 or 25% of the units would be able to convert to ADUs, but that, that would be, it would be significant to know whether the CCNRs, if they're privately developed, would be able to preempt state law. Separate from that, so I was looking at condition number 100, which I think pertains to the bicycle pedestrian through-block connection, and I think that language is intended to prohibit, so what, I think I mentioned this to staff in another context, I, there was a development near where I grew up that used to allow public access, and then the HOA installed a gate and wasn't, and the public access was, was prohibited, that there was nothing the city can do. And so I was hoping you could walk me through the language for condition 100 to make sure that doesn't happen with this development.
I, I think, if you don't mind, we're going to confer on that, as well as the preemption of state law that would prevent CCNRs, and get back to you, Councilmember Ramirez. I do understand there has been some additional guidance from our consulting attorney on the CCNR issue.
Okay, thank you. And then last question while you're looking into those. And I, I appreciate that it's speculative and very difficult to know with any level of confidence what's going to happen over the next few months, but in the event, there is a second wave, and, you know, a very restrictive shelter in place order is reinstated around the proposed move-out deadline. Does staff or, or the applicant have any means of accommodating the, the tenants? So I guess maybe another way of thinking about this is, if a shelter in place order were to be reinstated shortly before the move-out date, would the move-out date persist nonetheless, or would there be some accommodation to allow some additional time? Or how exactly would that work?
I would, I would want to confer with the city attorney on this issue. I don't know if he's able to answer it, or if we need to take it and, and discuss it before providing a response.
Yeah, this is Christian, the city attorney. It's difficult to speculate. I don't want to be very specific about what your question is focused on. Are you referring to the February 1st move-out date, Councilmember Ramirez?
Well, I, I'm agnostic on the move-out date. It's, I mean, and again, I appreciate that it's, it's speculative, but in the event there is a restrictive shelter in place order, you know, shortly in advance of the anticipated move-out date, does, does that put the move-out date on hold? You know, is there some accommodation for the tenants, or does the move-out date persist? And the, the tenants, if they're still in the complex, would, would they still need to move out?
You know, this is all predicated on the inability for the city to require any accommodation beyond that, which is required by the TRIO. So the, in this instance, the developer is voluntarily offering a grace period to February 1st to move out. There's no ability for the city to require any additional condition or any additional accommodation in, in that regard, in terms of if there's a future order, that, that would not be something we could require in a condition.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
And I also have an answer to your first question, which is, it's up to 25% of the number of existing multifamily units with a minimum of one.
Councilmember Ramirez, I also wanted to respond to the second question you had, and that was, if private CCNRs can be preempted by state law, and I stand corrected, we have received advice from our council on housing that even private agreements cannot preempt state law.
So, sorry, just to clarify, that would mean that up to 25% of the garages could be converted into ADUs without having to replace parking?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? If not, I will open this up for public comment. And if you, if you're a member of the public in the attendee box and would like to provide public comment, please hit the raise, but raise hand button at the bottom. And if you're on the phone, please press star and i. And let's see, I see, one, two, three, four, five, six. City clerk, do you have any other public comment, just so I can get a sense of how many to figure out time allotment?
Yes, Mayor, I, I have about, I have two emails, possibly three emails here.
Okay, so two, four, six. So let's give everyone two minutes, and I will start with Alex Nunez, and let me unmute you, if I can do that. Hold on a second. There we go. Alex Nunez, you are on.
Awesome. Can anyone hear me?
Yes. Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure thing.
There you go.
So, you know, I have a, I bought a law book at one point for California planning law and all that stuff, and on page one, chapter one, it says, "The legal basis for all land use regulation is the police power of the city to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its residents." It's the very first sentence. In the planned unit development as well, section G also describes that the permit shall only be granted if the operating characteristics do not interfere with the, you know, human health and safety. I'm paraphrasing, but Christian will probably be able to, you know, tell me if I'm misleading myself on any of these points here. But, you know, I, I really see this as, as a choice here. This is not something that, you know, hands are tied, and there's no responsibility that can be taken for this. To the contrary, I actually think that right now, what we're seeing, if the role of the council is to protect the general welfare of current if the role of the council is to protect the general welfare of current residents and of all residents, what we're seeing is the cost of redevelopment is pushing an overtaxed BMR system where we're having to inquire if we can get displaced people onto our waiting list. We don't have units. $5 million unfortunately is not going to be enough to turn on the units that we need. Really, this is, this is the cost of development being pushed onto the people. And now we're about to displace people in the middle of an uncertain time during this virus crisis. You know, that's really not acceptable. It really feels, and you guys definitely have a choice, and you haven't done anything, so I'm not pushing any kind of like blame or anything. But, you know, when we talk about advocacy groups and about them knowing the facts, what are the facts? The facts are that there's not enough housing. The council in the past has taken decisions that have displaced people over and over again. And so right now, I ask you to please consider protecting the health of the current residents who are living here. You have a choice. You don't have to approve the project. Please protect people who are living here today. It would really change the narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to Bruce England. Let me see if I can unmute you. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble unmuting you. City clerk, would you be able to unmute? It can't seem to.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I unmuted myself. I had that control somehow or other, so. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive. I'm speaking for Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning. We submitted a letter, a comment letter, so I won't read from that. I'll just highlight some points and add a few more. "We are strongly concerned about the evictions, whether they happen in October or February. As Alex said, this is a very uncertain time and we don't know what's going to happen. And individuals are making their own decisions about whether they feel safe about going out or seeking new housing." So having that delayed, whoever takes control of that process should do so, in our opinion. "We are also concerned about the lack of BMR requirements." So there's already been discussion about getting people into BMR housing. So that's a good component of that discussion, too. "We counted that there was actually a reduction in housing units." Councilmember McAllister was talking about bedrooms, but our count showed that it was one unit less in the new development. "We would also, as far as features for the development, we would like to see ground floor open to the public, you know, with retail services or whatever amenities that are available to the public so it doesn't function as a, like I say, gated community." "And lastly, to optimize the streetscaping, for example, by putting in urban greenways on the perimeter of the project to make it more open to the public and not just serve the people who are living there." And those are all the comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to Cynthia Christensen. See if I can unmute you, or maybe you can unmute yourself.
I think I unmuted it.
You are? Yes, yes, welcome.
Okay. My name's Cynthia Lindsay-Christensen, and I'm representing Lindsay Properties, who built and now, and have continued to own Meadowwood Apartments for the last 46 years. Allow me to take a minute to give you a little perspective. In 1923, at the age of 60, my great-grandfather, Walter John Lindsay, gathered his large family together from the cattle ranges in Utah, looking for an opportunity and moved to Mountain View. A few pieces of property were purchased, and within a year, eight homes were built and sold. A few of these homes are still standing with families living in them just a few blocks from where you are on Billis Street. In 1923, almost 100 years ago, Lindsay Construction Company was started. They built throughout the Bay Area for the next 50 years. Here in Mountain View, the Lindsays continued to build several apartment buildings in the 1970s, including Meadowwood. I tell you this because I want you to understand that Lindsay Properties that own Meadowwood is not some fly-by-night newcomer that has swooped in to try and make a quick buck. We helped build Mountain View from the ground up and have been there building for over almost 100 years. Now Meadowwood, with the infrastructure aging, we find ourselves with buildings that are in need of significant, significant repair. They are needing 50-year-old plumbing systems, sprinkler systems, apartments, and things that need earthquake safety, ziruscape, new roofs, things that cost millions of dollars. And our tenants need to find somewhere else to live for six or eight months while major renovations are taking place. Over the last 100 years, our family has taken pride in these properties, and we've chosen Summer Hill, who we believe will take the same pride in these, in this property going forward. And we ask that you approve this property, this property improvement and this project going forward.
Thank you very much. We will move on now to Albert James.
Albert James? Myself. Hi. Is it possible to show the slides that I sent, or is that too much?
City clerk, are we able to do the slides?
Yes, I can do that quickly. I won't be able to share the timer at the same time.
That's okay. I have my own timer.
All right, just give me one moment here.
By the way, the video and audio quality is much, much better this week than it was last week. Okay, I started my timer. Hi, I'm Albert James, you know. I actually, yeah, I approved this project in general, and I just wanted to say a few words about parking. Ironically, I actually, Meadowwood is the first place I lived in Mountain View 37 years ago. And so, but I'm very concerned about the parking that will generate. And please take a note of the parking, current parking density that you see here on San Ramon Drive. Next slide, please. What I see around Mountain View is every rowhouse development I've seen results in completely packed streets outside. I mean, even though they have their own garages, I was interested to hear Mr. Hickey's comment that the CCNRs require people to use their garages for parking. And I'm wondering how enforceable that is. Next slide, please. So here you see some examples around Mountain View and the streets, even this new development, Wisman Station, as soon as finished, fully parked. Next slide, please. And my hypothesis is that people do tend to use their garages for storage. For apartment complexes, they can't do that on a parking space. It's just a spot, right? So they do park their cars there. That's what I did. Single-family homes have driveways. They can park their cars there. Rowhouses don't have driveways. So if the people are allowed to park on the street, they will. Next slide, please. And this is what will happen. This is my street on a good day. Next slide. Please. And this is what will happen to the people on San Marcos Circle, San Ramon. And of course, that impacts street sweeping, trash collection, safety, litter, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide, please. Final slide, please. So I would strongly urge the council to make a, to make a condition for approval that the developer or the owner pay for essentially a parking permit program to not allow people in these rowhouses to park on the nearby streets since they have their garages. And I don't think the current residents should be allowed, should be forced to shoulder that burden. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move next to Jackie Kasson. You can unmute yourself, please. Let's see. Jackie, could you try to unmute yourself? I'm having trouble. I can't seem to unmute.
Mayor, I think our IT director is trying to assist by unmuting. So what's he able to right now for you?
I'll just leave it alone. Yeah, thank you.
Jackie, are you able to speak now?
Mic is still seeing, saying muted. Let me, let me go to Alex Brown, and then we'll come back to you, Jackie. And see, hopefully by then we'll have you unmuted.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Alex.
It's so rare that I have technical issues. I love it. Hey, hey, everybody. Yeah. I appreciate the comments from a lot of my fellow Mountain View residents. I think that the externalities of this project are being under-measured, and I think it's unfortunate. I, I was sorry to hear that the Lindsays are unable to maintain their property, and I think that's unfortunate, that they are not equipped to rehab the units for, to maintain livability and safety. I think that planning has to be done on a very long-term scale. And while it's very nice that we're able to use the TRIO ordinance to help people in the short term, that we are losing a stock of affordable housing that we cannot build back up. We aren't able to build, to find or pencil out affordable housing projects. Our BMR units are already oversubscribed. And this is just another thing that is going to reduce the stock of affordable housing in Mountain View. I do like that they're able to get rid of driveways to make biking easier. That's nice. It's a really nice thing. But at what cost? Just, this is just one more project that is getting rid of houses that people can afford to live in, in favor of, you know, nice units that are expensive and prone to speculation and just raising the average cost of housing in Mountain View further. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna try Jackie Kasson again. Jackie, can you, oh, you were on for a second. Could you?
I'm sorry, were you, are you talking to Jesse or Jackie?
I was actually trying to get back to Jackie, but.
I think that's me. I may be under a different name, so I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I do see you as well, Jesse. So why don't you go ahead? Actually, I think it's Jackie. So please, Jesse Cardenas, please go ahead. Welcome.
Okay. So, yeah, the thing that Summer Hill was, the thing that they were listing as far as, you know, the amenities that are around the current proposal, you know, walking distance to schools, you know, you've got Theracoff right down the street. You've got, you got Crenshaw and the Cox together. And then you've got Safeway right down the street. Those are all awesome and, you know, bravo to the people who, that, that, you know, will be looking forward to purchasing those homes so they could, they could enjoy that. Unfortunately, the current residents are the ones who are going to be losing that. These are not residents who can afford to purchase multimillion-dollar homes. These are residents who are, there's a lot of residents in this current complex who are seniors. You've got disabled. You've got low-income immigrants that are in those homes as well. So, yeah, you're giving this to other people, but you're taking it away from people who really do need it. So, and then you're talking about uprooting them and then taking them elsewhere, giving them 8,300 bucks, and here you go, good luck finding another place that has that, the same mix of amenities as this place that has, you know. I feel very fortunate to live in Mountain View. I know a lot of the residents do. This is a great city. We've got great schools, but you're just taking that away from these people. So just think about that. I mean, also, it's pretty ridiculous that during this meeting, you guys spent more time talking about the trees, the uprooting trees, trying to figure out what kind of trees to put back in, the size of the trees. You spent more time doing that than you did talking about the residents. So I just want that to sink into everybody who's listening. I want that to sink into council. Do not take this away from the residents, whether this is their home. There's more to a home than how much they pay and the physical space that occupies their home. There's also their community, their friends, their family, everything. So just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go back and try Jackie. Are you able to join us? I thought I heard you, Jackie, earlier. Jackie, can you try to unmute yourself, please? If IT staff can help here, she was unmuted.
Mayor, I'm going to transfer into the panel. I'll see if you can mute her in the panel.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, she didn't transfer to the panel. I don't know if she dropped off. I don't see her.
Let's see. Apologies to everyone. We're looking for Jackie.
Can she email? Then Lisa read it?
She could, yes. Jackie, if you are on and you'd like to email your comments, please do so. I'm gonna go to our city clerk for her to read the other public comments, and then we'll see if Jackie comes back.
Thank you, mayor. I have an email from Joan McDonald. Dear Mayor, Abicoca, and city council members, advocates for affordable housing are aware that many of you regret that the proposed redevelopment of 1555 West Middlefield will displace 116 households of their affordable housing while creating row houses probably unaffordable for those tenants. The staff report indicates you have little choice in the matter. However, while shelter in place is the norm, this seems a particularly difficult time for tenants to find suitable affordable housing. We are wondering if, under the current circumstances, this might be deemed an eviction. Certainly a just cause eviction, but nonetheless, an eviction so must wait until the shelter in place is lifted, which will soon be extended. We appreciate being able to weigh in on this matter. Sincerely, Joan McDonald for AAH. The next email is from Chuck Neder. Dear councilmembers, I'm sure it would be nice to have new luxury row homes located near Google headquarters. Now doesn't seem like a good time to start construction. Approving the removal of Meadowwood Apartments during COVID-19 pandemic would put the tenants at great health risk. Residential redevelopment near Google seems like a housing development priority that can wait. Sincerely, Charles Neder, 1555 West Middlefield. And I'll just check quickly to see if I've received any additional emails.
And I do see Jackie on.
Okay, I don't have any additional emails after 5:00 PM, so.
Great. Jackie, welcome. Let's see if we can get you on here. Can you unmute yourself? Let's see if I can find you. Okay, you should be on. Jackie? Jackie, can you speak? I think you are unmuted. No, no, she can't. Am I? Okay, Jackie? I don't think she can hear me now. Jackie, can you hear? Let's see here. I can find.
Yeah, I don't think she can hear us. I'm gonna go ahead and move her back to the attendee list.
Okay.
Looks like she's calling in.
Yeah, I think she's trying to dial the passcode.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. I also have Chen Wang. Are you here to speak on this item?
Hey, Margaret?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, yeah. This is the first time actually for me to use Zoom to conference. All of these Google Hangouts. Yeah.
Yes.
So basically, I want to raise my concern if this project is funded by Measure A. Basically, I learned that if the project is funded by Measure A.
I'm sorry, Chen, this is actually the item before. I think you're here to speak on the next item.
Oh, okay, I wait. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No worries. Thank you. We'll hear, we'll hear from you in a bit then. And then Adrian Lewis, are you here to speak on this item, 1555 Middlefield?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I am a tenant at Meadowwood right now. I've lived here for the last two years with my kids and my husband, and we do love it here. But I will say that. Um, and with my kids and my husband, and we do love it here. Um, but I will say that, um, as is common with any building that is old, eventually it runs out and I can see that there um, are renovations that need to be made to these apartments that really just can't be made with people living here. Their pipes get old, there are things like that. And so as a tenant, um, I can, I can see the need for, um, really starting over with this building. And, um, while I love it here and I will be really sad to go, um, I think that Mountain View will really benefit from, um, the beautiful homes that Summer Hill is creating. I'm, I'm sad that I won't have my apartment and I won't be able to afford one of those, um, houses quite yet. But, um, I do, I can appreciate, um, the need for, for these new houses. And I can appreciate, um, Lindsay Company's need, uh, to move on from this project. Um, and I, I look forward to seeing those beautiful structures. So I, I do hope that you approve that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I'm gonna try to find Jackie one more time. Let's see. Jackie, can you hear me? I think I lost her again.
Uh, if she dialed in, she may need to hit star nine to identify herself. We have some phone numbers there.
Jackie, if you are on the line, could you please hit star nine from your phone? And I think what I'm gonna do in the meantime is to bring it back to council and if we do have her come on.
Someone has raised their hand.
Oh, great. Thank you. Hello, is this Jackie? Oh, no, I think she dropped off. All right. Um, all right, at this point, I am gonna bring it back to council if by chance, oh, here we go. Oh, no. If by chance we get Jackie, hopefully Jackie, if you can just call, email or call in, we will try to fit you in. Um, we're gonna go bring it back to council for deliberation. Councilmember Ramirez? I'm sorry, Mr. Vostova, did you have some comments first?
Yes, um, we just. I, I did wanna respond to one question brought up by Councilmember Ramirez about the public easement. Um, and I did discuss this with staff. Um, and we do have, um, a connection from Middlefield Road to San Ramon Avenue. Uh, it runs about, I would say, um, alongside, um, the Stub Street. Um, um, that's, that's to the west of the project and it goes right through. Uh, and based on the conditions of approval, it cannot be gated off by the property owner. And public access has to be allowed, um, along that.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mayor, should I just speed? Are you muted?
Mayor, you're, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, the applicant actually has his hand up and they're allowed a two-minute rebuttal. So, um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ramirez, I just saw that. So let me go to him and then we'll bring it back to you. So, Mr. Hickey? Let's see if you, can you unmute yourself, please?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, I just wanted to take a quick moment. First of all, to address, uh, Councilmember Ramirez's, um, comment. We'll also, uh, we can add signage too, just so the public is aware of the availability of the, of the route through the site as well. But in addition, I just wanted to mention something that, um, uh, neglected to mention in my initial comments, which is that, uh, as you know, Lindsay Companies actually owns other properties as well around Mountain View and Sunnyvale. And we have, um, worked with them. They've been able to identify recently, uh, five or six other, uh, similarly priced units uh, that they're gonna make, uh, that are coming available in June and July. And they're gonna make them available first to Meadowwood residents, uh, who are interested. And we will continue to work with Lindsay Companies over the next, uh, five to eight months, uh, eight months, I assume, um, to, uh, to identify additional units at a comparable price and make those available first to any Meadowwood interest, uh, tenants who are interested.
Thank you.
And actually, one other thing I just wanted to quickly mention. I don't know if I'm able to share my screen briefly.
Are we able to accommodate this shared screen?
Um, yes, we'll just need a moment.
Yeah, he should be ready to go.
Okay.
Here we are. Thank you. So I just wanted to point out a little bit about the, the current tenant profile at Meadowwood because I think it's a little bit different from some of the other row house project, or excuse me, the existing apartment complexes around Mountain View. Uh, first of all, thirty percent of the households have already moved out. Um, and unlike a lot of apartments, the turnover here is quite high. The median tenancy is actually less than three, around three years, a little less than three years. The average rents are actually within twenty percent of the city median. And, um, uh, our estimate based on the, the data we have and that A R W S has received is that it looks as though about seventy-five percent of the tenants are actually above moderate income. So making more than a hundred and twenty percent of the A M I. Now, having said that, of course, we're still looking for opportunities to, to help the tenants who are there and who need additional assistance. But I just wanted to mention that about the tenant profile.
Great, thank you. So now I will, uh, bring it back to council and Councilmember Ramirez. Would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I think just by way of a short preamble, uh, this is another one of those very challenging projects. And I'm pretty sure none of us were really enthusiastic about coming into this meeting. If, uh, if anybody had the misfortune of sitting next to you right now, I think they'd feel sort of the, the palpable anxiety I'm experiencing. But I think it's important to start off, um, recognizing that the state severely curtails the council's discretion when reviewing code compliant projects. And when we're, when we're analyzing projects like this, we are limited to evaluation based on objective criteria. Um, and, you know, I, I know, you know, there's a sort of an ongoing debate about, um, the value of local control. And while I do think local control can be abused, I do think that there can be a valuable, uh, it can be a valuable tool. You know, if we had greater discretion in reviewing projects like this, um, you know, I think our, our conversation may be a little bit different. But we don't have that discretion. I think staff has made that very clear. And that, that's, that's sort of the overriding consideration and challenge, I think, for, for the council when reviewing this project. Um, but having said that, I think what, what distinguishes this project from every other code compliant project that we have reviewed or that council has reviewed over the past several years, um, is that it's not categorically exempt from CEQA. Um, and that invites greater, or an opportunity for, for greater scrutiny. I did want to, uh, I, staff kind of spoke to this a little bit. I did, uh, and I, I had shared some of these concerns with staff. I did wanna share my particular concern with the analysis that's provided for one of the CEQA checklist questions under population and housing. And that's the, uh, the question, would the project displace substantial numbers of existing people or housing necessitating the construction of replacement housing elsewhere? And if, um, if it's helpful, this appears, um, in the, uh, as page forty-one or in the PDF page forty-eight. Uh, there's some brief analysis provided there. And then at the very end of the document, um, an addendum uh, that goes into, uh, a little bit more detail. And the concern I have is the analysis is, is very high level and doesn't take advantage of the granular detail that is available, even, you know, with, with some other city analysis conducted. So for instance, um, the CEQA document references the availability of fifteen thousand CSF array units. And it's, I think, incomplete insofar as it doesn't, it doesn't recognize that we, we do have the vacancy rates available for those units. Um, and if we were to make a distinction between the fully covered CSF array units and the partially covered of those constructed after nineteen ninety-five, three point nine percent, as though this is from the City of Mountain View Rent Stabilization Program Annual Report, the most recent one. Three point nine percent of the fully covered CSF array units, which is just shy of thirteen thousand five hundred, are, are vacant, uh, which represents just over five hundred units. Um, the annual report also provides the average rent for fully covered CSF array units. So two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars per month is what it says. And the challenge I, I'm having is if we, if we consider not just the total number of, of available units, CSF array units, but focus on the, the, actually the vacancy rates, right? The, the, uh, unoccupied units that are presumably attainable for at least some of these tenants. Um, then I think the math gets a little bit more complicated and it, it's, it's not as clear cut as, you know, everyone who's displaced is gonna be able to, to find a vacant CSF array unit for, for a couple of reasons. Right? There's the limited availability, um, and then the industry standard that, for, for income qualif, income qualification, you have to demonstrate that you make three times the rent, um, uh, in, in, in income. That was the industry standard I had to, um, uh, adhere to when, when I was looking for, well, the, the unit I'm living in now. Um, and it's interesting that, that the applicant provides that analysis about their, their demographics. The, the CEQA document estimates that, uh, I think roughly seventy households would be eligible for tenant relocation assistance. So, um, you know, I think it would be helpful to, to double check where, where the CEQA documents, um, and, uh, that, where that estimate comes from, because it appears to be different from what the applicant is sharing. But that's, that's a substantial number of people who don't likely make the industry standard to be able to qualify for the market, the available market, um, or the, the, for the market average rents for fully covered units. Um, and it gets even more complicated when you think about the cumulative impacts caused by the demolition of other CSF array projects over the past several years. And I think, uh, staff had shared with, with me a, a spreadsheet a few months ago that showed roughly a thousand units that were, that either had been demolished or, or slated for demolition. Which, you know, if you think about the total number of displaced people, sort of the cumulative impact far exceeds the number of, uh, vacant fully covered CSF array units, which presumably are the only units that would be affordable for these folks. Um, and I think sort of the, the complicating factor here is, I think staff had described, there is no defined threshold of significance. Um, and analysis is still required. And, you know, the analysis here in the mitigated negative declaration says that there is no significant impact. But I think if we look, if we look at the, the quantitative data that does exist, that the city provides in the annual report for the CSF array program, I'm not so sure that the analysis in the mitigated negative declaration justifies the conclusion. Um, that, uh, that, you know, that's, that the document makes here. At least that's, that's the challenge I individually am, am struggling with. It, it doesn't really look at income qualification or eligibility and it doesn't examine the true availability of comparable units. And when we think about just the impact of this project, the however many hundred people who, uh, who live here, who would be displaced, you know, that's a significant chunk of the, uh, the roughly five hundred available units per the city data. But if you think about the over, you know, one thousand people who would have to find a comparable unit based on the cumulative impact. Um, you know, I'm, 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 I'm really not sure we can, we can, I, I couldn't authentically come to this conclusion without greater analysis. Um, so, uh, you know, analysis that's, that's as robust as the, the analysis provided for air quality and for noise and vibration. So, uh, it's sort of my long-winded way of saying, you know, I, I can't support approving the mitigated neg death. Um, you know, and so my preference would be to, to separate consideration of the, the initial study and then M N D from the vote for the project itself, which I think is, you know, falls under sort of a different consideration here. Just because I, I don't think the analysis provided for this question is sufficient to justify the conclusion. Um, so and I recognize that, I think reasonable people can come to different conclusions based on this data. But, you know, as I see it, thinking about and reviewing the, the other data that's available, the more granular data, you know, I, I couldn't personally come to the same conclusion that this document comes to. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Any other comments by councilmembers? Let's see, Councilmember Hicks?
So I wouldn't have been able to put it in all those words, but I agree that it's hard for me to conclude that, um, significant displacement is not going on cumulatively. I just gave a double negative there. You know, I think we are experiencing displacement and, uh, I agree with Councilmember Ramirez. And I, um, unless I'm convinced otherwise, I, I also would not be able to vote for that, for the mitigated negative declaration. Thank you.
Any other comments by councilmembers? Uh, let's see, it's someone's hand. Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, um, I appreciate Councilmember Ramirez's words and thoughts. I wish he was with me six years ago when I constantly said, let's buy these projects, these apartment complexes when they were less expensive and that we would be able to have control of our destiny with our affordable units, subsidized units. But, um, sometimes it takes a while to get there and it looks like it's gonna continue to take a while before we can afford and buy these units to prevent displacement. I, uh, I have, um, concerns, because I've been on this council for a while and we see a lot of displacement. I think a lot of it could have been prevented if we acted differently in prior years. And hopefully moving forward, we can address some of these issues, either through we buy our properties or we allow landlords to do improvements at a reasonable, fair, uh, pace. I know this particular property was trying for years to try to do improvements, but there was some differences of opinion on how they should advance and how they should recover their costs. And hopefully that we can learn something from this project going forward that, um, the R H C can learn to say, okay, we have ability to prevent this displacement, but we need to be thinking out of the box sometimes and thinking what best we can do to bring two sides together to resolve, uh, and prevent the displacement. Uh, I'm always disappointed to see people move, but, you know, as Councilmember Ramirez said, that there are some, uh, objective requirements that we cannot set aside and that we have to follow and that we will, you know, we will have to move forward with it. Uh, the one person made a comment about the trees and I know in comparison to people's lives, it's, it's not as important. But the, the circumstances that this project has come through, that it's a complete compliance, that there are limited things that the council can do. So myself and Councilmember Madacek and others are trying to improve the area and improve what we can. I know canopy and trees are important to a lot of people. So we try to improve it the best we can, given the circumstances. So, uh, you are right, this is trivia to people's lives, but we'll do our best to try to make it important and, uh, move forward. I do like to point out that our next item on the agenda is to approve a hundred and twenty subsidized units. So we are giving up a hundred and sixteen, but we are moving forward to try to subsidize, bring a project into the city at a hundred and twenty subsidized units. I also like to point out that, yes, we're losing these units, but we are still adding thousands of units. And hopefully as those projects come online over in San Antonio and Evelyn and Villa in California, that demand will soften and prices will come down reasonably and people will be able to stay in their homes. and people will be able to stay in their homes longer. Those is a wish list and I hope that comes about, but we will have to see. So I would like to make a motion and I may need a little bit of the city attorney's help to clarify it. Um, and the things that I was interested in, the adding city manage, uh, city attorney was, do we need to put the three-month extension in there?
Yes, and I was just about to raise my hand and assist you with that. Uh, I I would like to just say some comments about, uh, Councilmember Ramirez and Councilmember Hicks comments about the SEQA document. The reason why projects always include a SEQA determination and the resolution approving the project itself is because they travel together. And while any council member is always entitled to vote in whatever, uh, way they desire, in this case, with the SE document, the project resolution actually has a finding that states the project complies with SEQA. So if one were hypothetically to vote against the SEQA document, that would be contradicting what's contained in the resolution for the project. Again, I I'm not suggesting, uh, council members cannot vote in the way that they desire, but I just wanted to point that out, that there's a legal connection between the project approval resolution and the SEQA document. So that being said, I can assist you with the add-on to the motion, uh, which would be a condition added to the project. And for full disclosure, the applicant shortly before this meeting sent me and the city manager the proposed language, which I have reviewed and I believe it is legally sufficient, and I can read that into the record as an additional, uh, condition for the project now. It would be as follows. The developer has voluntarily offered a three-month grace period to current tenants of Meadowwood period to ensure compliance with the Ellis Act, that's capital E, capital A. The three-month period until February one, two thousand twenty-one will not be considered an extension of the lease, but the grace period will be formalized for interested tenants through individual written confirmations. And if I could just, uh, ask, uh, the developer if he could raise his hand and, uh, signal, uh, agreement with that language.
I do see his hand is raised in the attendee box. So, um, with that, Councilmember McAllister, would you like to continue your motion?
Yes, and also one other, uh, I wanted another clarification. The developer was willing to increase of, uh, sized boxes on the trees, the sixty-six, I believe, so does that have to be a part of the conditions also put in there?
There is a, um, an additional resolution regarding the, or a component regarding the tree, uh, the tree removal. I I would defer to community development staff to see if that is a specific, uh, condition.
Is sure of us.
Yes, I think we're we're looking at that, um, and I also wanted to, uh, check in with the city attorney about the enhanced trail, which is voluntary and goes over and above, uh, what the city requires. Um, uh, we will also add that, um, as an acknowledgement of the voluntary, um, trail, um, benefits for this project.
Yes, that that's, that's, that's appropriate.
And that's listed in the staff report, uh, for for you.
Okay, so that will suffice? Or do we need to?
Yes, that that would suffice and if we could just get the, um, applicant's consent to to those those three items.
Yes, and and regarding the street trees, it, yes, we would want to add a another condition of approval under the landscaping section in the resolution that specifies the, uh, upsizing of the the size of the trees. I believe from the discussion, you wanted it upsized from them of twenty-four inch box to thirty-six inch box?
That is correct. I think they particularly found, you know, streets, uh, the particular, uh, area along the street, along Middlefield, I believe, they were trying to up, okay. I think that will be a benefit for the public and bike riders also, so.
Okay, we can add to the extent feasible because we just want to check with Public Works that the utilities allow us to do that.
Okay.
So, um, Miss, I see the applicant still has his hand raised, so I'm going to take that as an agreement with the trees and the trail and, uh, the three-month grace period. If that's not correct, please lower your hand. Okay, so the hand's still up, so those three items are added to the motion and I believe you, uh, if you can read two and three into the record, Councilmember McAllister.
I'm sorry, I'd recommend reading one, two. On the on the script, uh, it's not highlighted in red, but it should be red as well.
Okay, if you can read all three, please, Mr. Weckler.
Okay, I'll be, okay. Approve a mitigated negative declaration for the fifteen fifty-five West Middlefield Road, Middlefield Road Residential Project. Two, adopt a resolution conditionally approving a planned unit development and development review permit to construct a hundred and fifteen-unit rowhouse development project and a heritage tree removal permit to remove fifty-five heritage trees at fifteen fifty-five West Middlefield Road to be read in title only further reading wave. And three, adopt a resolution conditionally approving a vested tentative map for condominium purposes for a hundred and fifteen-unit residential project, creating twenty lots and seven common lots on five point four four acres, lot at fifteen fifty-five West Middlefield Road to be read in title only further reading wave and language as per authorized by the city attorney.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second on the motion or any comments? Uh, Councilmember Maticek.
Thank you. So I want to acknowledge the comments Councilmember Ramirez said. I think for all of us, these are very difficult projects. And we we understand that, uh, the implications of these decisions, that people are being displaced. I appreciate the applicant, um, extending the move-out period by three months. And I also appreciate the applicant, uh, working with the property owner for other properties that they have, uh, in the area to, uh, try to help the folks who are there, uh, move into, um, a vacant unit. I think there are other property owners, uh, that would also be, um, very happy to get a call and see if they can help, um, and I'm sure any of us would be happy to make the connections there. Um, I, I will second the motion, um, and I, again, I just want to acknowledge that these are incredibly difficult times and, and this is a difficult situation, but this is a fully compliant project. Um, so again, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion by Councilmember McAllister, second by Councilmember Maticek. Any other discussion, Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, very briefly, I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Maticek and, uh, likewise, uh, appreciate, uh, the applicant's willingness to at least extend, uh, the grace period. Um, you know, it's it's all conjecture. We don't know exactly what the future holds, but I think it it can, it can be meaningful in the event there is a second wave and and the timing with October, um, proves to be challenging. Um, but, uh, so I I can't support the motion, uh, simply because I I can't support the first, uh, item, uh, approving the the mitigated negative declaration. I think, um, you know, in in future, in the event this happens again, if we have other, uh, you know, projects that, uh, have a displacement impact and and trigger, uh, SEQA, you know, I think, uh, analysis should, in the future, consider income qualification just just given the the high threshold and, um, uh, and the sort of the, we're all, what I'll call the true availability of of comparable units. Just sort of stating that there are fifteen thousand CSFRA units is a little bit misleading if we don't, at the same time, acknowledge that many of them are occupied. Um, and, you know, longer term, I don't know if this is something that we may want to revisit in the, um, the work on item related to displacement measures, but I think having a standard for a threshold of significance would be important, uh, because I think reasonable people, again, can come to different conclusions about what constitutes a threshold of significance or something that is evaluative, uh, qualitatively, uh, and and for in particular, uh, an impact like this one. Um, so I I don't begrudge anybody for for coming to a different conclusion, uh, from the conclusion I'm coming from. I just think it means that, um, a standard would be helpful, so we could all sort of, you know, gauge whether there are true impacts that are that are being, um, made and and whether they're sufficiently mitigated. So, um, I, uh, can't support the motion, but, uh, you know, acknowledging that it's a code-compliant project, I I, um, I know there's, there's not a whole heck of a lot that we can do, um, and, uh, would encourage those in the in the audience who are concerned about, um, impacts like these or projects like these to talk to the state and say maybe, you know, some enhanced local control can be beneficial in certain circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Great, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to thank staff and thank my colleagues for, uh, the discussion and the different perspectives bringing that forward to a very difficult issue. Um, you know, I think there's, we've discussed lots of hard things since the pandemic hit and I think talking about a displacement project is probably the toughest, um, discussion that we've had to to have. Um, and at the beginning of last year, um, the council saw many displacement projects like the one we're discussing tonight and, you know, conversion projects, um, from rental to to ownership. And I think it really has shaped our city council goals and we, as a, as a policymaking body, uh, really came together and that was reflected in the council goals that we're pursuing. We're looking at displacement strategies, uh, which was number one of our of our goals, as well as revising our our three row home and town home guidelines, which is another issue that we're seeing tonight, uh, with the zoning. So, um, you know, those are in the works, those are not yet completed. Uh, obviously, we're we're still trying to create those tools so that, uh, we can do, I think, what's most important, which is to try to, uh, have, not have these types of displacement projects come forward and kind of try to disincentivize those types of situations. Um, you know, and I think the other difficult thing that we're hearing tonight as well is the the inability of of council to to force anyone to to do something with their property when they'd like to to go out of out of the business. Um, and I think, as was mentioned, some of the things that the applicant has put forward, um, like the enhanced trail, um, the assistance with relocation and the extension of the grace period, I think will be things that can help, um, people not necessarily maybe have the the right of return to this property, but hopefully be able to move into, um, another situation in Mountain View. I think that the city attorney and staff has really laid out the kind of legal implications and, uh, the fact that it is a is a code-compliant project. And I I feel like SEQA is always very, uh, it's a difficult, uh, thorny, uh, policy tool. Um, but as Councilmember Ramirez mentioned, it's something that we have to bring up to the state. So I think, uh, it's with reluctance that I support the motion, more so because I wish that we weren't in this situation and that we had the other policies and goals that, um, finished. But I do want the public to know that we are listening and we are trying to to make those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks?
Oh, I'll keep it short. I will not be supporting the project over my concerns about displacement. Um, I, but I I deeply appreciate the, um, attitude, all the the, uh, changes they've made with trail and the and the street trees, which I do think are important, and, um, and a number of other, the, um, the, uh, conditions on the garages, because I actually think that is important, whether they're used as closets or garages and a number of other issues. And it's, I I'm not, my, uh, vote against the project shouldn't be taken as anything against the developer themselves. I think they're doing, um, wonderful work and a not like in, uh, in North Wisman and, um, I hope to work with them in the future to do projects, um, more projects like that.
Thank you. Any other council members? If not, um, I will just add my comments. Um, yes, I agree with my colleagues, this is not a happy or a, um, an easy, um, decision to make. We've made these this in the past. Um, this is actually even more code-compliant than the past projects we've seen. So I think we're very limited in what we are able to do, um, but that does not, um, that doesn't, um, minimize that 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 there is the impacts on, um, certain, uh, individuals. And this is probably the worst timing, uh, for this project to come forward. Uh, I find this, um, kind of an example, and as Councilmember Ramirez mentioned, of, um, the loss of local control and also the conflict that, um, we see in terms of housing and the, you know, desire by the state and others, uh, housing advocates for more housing development and yet, um, uh, you know, the the unintended consequences of that. And why, why, the way, the reason I say that is because with the shelter in place order, um, everything had been on hold, even construction, uh, but the state, um, lifted that because I believe they, um, have an interest in continuing housing production. Um, had the, um, you know, the construction also been held up, then this might have impacted the this project moving forward, um, but, uh, the state chose not to do that. And so I I think that's inherent conflict that we're going to continue to see, um, especially in a, like, and I've said this before many times, in a city like Mountain View where it's becoming mostly infill, even though we have zone for quite a few units, you know, in undeveloped, uh, land or conversions from industrial to residential, we're still going to continue to see infill development projects like this one. And that's where, um, these challenges will come forward. Um, but yes, the property owner has the right to, um, leave the business. I think we've, um, you know, tried, I know, I understand the interests of, um, certain, uh, or groups and advocacy groups, um, to minimize costs on tenants, but when you do that and you limit the ability for property owners to improve their units as well, um, that they may choose to get out of the business, as we're seeing. So, um, I I I know that the, um, intents are, I think, good on all sides, um, but there's unintended consequences that result and this is, uh, what we're seeing here. So I do appreciate the applicant's, um, willingness to, uh, extend a grace period and the enhanced trail. Um, you know, these are things that I, uh, our city has really, again, led in, led on. Um, uh, other cities still don't necessarily have tenant relocation assistance. This is something that Mountain View came forward and this was way back in the two thousand seven, eight time period. Uh, we were probably one of the first to require this and then to have it enhanced, um, as we chose to do last week, um, uh, following this, this applicant's, um, offerings, I think, uh, is, you know, that we're, we're trying to do our best to help the, those who are being displaced. And, um, my hope is that, you know, uh, folks won't wait until October or January and, um, with the assistance of the, um, relocation agency, I hope that, um, we can, you know, they can, uh, find a another place, maybe hopefully even in Mountain View. And I, I think, uh, Councilmember Ramirez, your, um, data is very interesting that to to calculate out that where are about five hundred units, um, CSFRA units that should be available right now. Um, I also mentioned that, um, I always think it's interesting when we talk about BMR units, but if you recall, we, there was a, I think it was when we were doing, um, maybe it was seismic retrofits, but there is a chart that showed that, um, CSFRA units actually go for less than BMR units on. Maybe it was seismic retrofits, but there is a chart that showed that um CSFRA units actually go for less than BMR units on I on average. And so when folks, you know, think BMR units are where folks should go uh for the lowest cost, that's not necessarily the case. And then um in terms of the NAGDEC um and the findings, um I you know, I appreciate Councilmember Ramirez, your comments. I think there's more to the equation, though. Um you know, we should be looking also at the number of units that are being produced. Um you know, even if they're higher priced apartment units, the the assumption, there there could, there is an assumption, I believe, that. Um some individuals will move from lower price price units to higher price units if they can afford to do so. So that that, you know, opens up more of the lower priced units. And that's the argument being made when we have folks say we need to allow for more development of units, housing units, period. So um in light of all that, I think, you know, that's all part of this. Um the NAGDEC is it's if there's mitigation that makes it less insignificant. I think that's what the trail and the other items um contribute to. So in a saying it in a long, long way, um I do support the project. Um and uh so I will be voting for it. And with that, does anyone else have any other comments? And if not, uh we will take a roll call vote, please. City Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hicks?
No.
Councilmember Madacek?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
No.
Vice Mayor Kamai?
Yes.
Mayor Abicoga?
Hi. Thank you. So motion carries five two with no abstentions. Thank you very much. Um would council like to take a quick break or should we move on? How about a five minute break, file break? So if we can get back, um we'll have to say eight twenty-five. Please return by eight twenty-five. Thank you.
We go on to item six, new business, six point one, the selection of Lot twelve preferred development team. And our staff presentation is by Assistant Community Development Director Wayne Chen. Welcome.
Uh thank you very much. Good evening, uh mayor and council. Uh let me just take a moment to share my screen. And can everyone's uh see the screen here? Okay, uh if so, I'll I'll go ahead and start. And thanks again. Um as the mayor mentioned, um this new business item is for council to consider a selection of the preferred uh Lot twelve development team. Uh we have a few recommendations here, which I'll go over in detail um at the end of the uh presentation. Um and just as a quick reminder, uh Lot twelve is a city owned one and a half acre site. Uh it's bounded by California Street, Bryant Street, and Mercy Street, uh just north of the library and uh the civic center. It is in the downtown precise plan uh area C. The city council has held a variety of uh study sessions or various study sessions over the last um couple of years. To define the Lot twelve development priorities. Uh um based on that information, uh last year, we initiated the marketing process for Lot twelve. The RFQ response period uh was open May fifteenth through August first of last year. And uh on September the tenth, uh the city council made RFQ recommendations about which um respondents. To invite to the RFP process. And also at that meeting, the council made final determination of the RFP priorities, which uh made it into the document that was uh released. A website was created that comprehensively included the RFQ and RFP information. Um as well as um other related information, such as the initial sort of work and studies that the city has undertaken to um get to this point. So these are the Lot twelve development priorities as concluded um last September. And um there are a variety of components. Uh first is um a residential component. Council supported up to a hundred and twenty units. Um with at least fifty percent of the units affordable, up to eighty percent AMI. And council was flexible about the population. Council supported a non-residential component uh with no office, up to ten thousand uh square feet. Um this element was um one way to get at the placemaking components. Uh there's a desire for um unique or innovative uses. It would be for both the residents of Lot twelve as well as the broader Mountain View community. Uh replacing all one hundred and sixty uh public parking spaces that are currently on Lot twelve. Uh has been a um a key element of um council's priorities. Uh council was supportive of certainly sufficiently parking the new uses. In other words, the residential use and non-residential use. Um but was open to potentially lower parking ratios with um robust TDM and other elements. Uh council did want to and was supportive of uh maximizing the development capacity of the site. Uh with heights going up to six stories allowed, which is higher than what the precise plan allows. But um there there are um components in the RFP that provide direction for how greater heights would be allowed. Um the council certainly wanted excellent architecture and design. Uh paying close attention to the transitions and the adjacency with the neighborhood residents. And again, the placemaking component could be a combination of great architecture. Um things like programming on the site, for example, public art, um the non-residential mixed use space. Um and other uh community um components and characteristics, such as community rooms and spaces, et cetera. So that's a sort of broad flexible component. Uh council supported having an affordable housing subsidy provided by the city. The council did support replacement parking subsidy, but did not specify a maximum amount last September. And council did support a modest amount of non-residential subsidy, but also did not specify a maximum amount. Uh for the flexible, um uh the ability to be flexible. The council was very clear in um asking the respondents to minimize the city subsidy requested and to maximize external leveraging. Um at the September twenty nineteen RFQ consideration session, there was a discussion about the cost of replacement parking. Um and um the replacement parking um has a um sort of fundamental component. In terms of the cost and the design of of the project. And there are trade offs associated with both. It it may cost a little bit more to, for example, put the garage um. Uh and replacement parking underground, but it may be uh a better design. And so there are trade offs. Um the RFP did include the ability um for respondents to include repurposing the parking facility. Um but it must meet other Lot twelve priorities. Uh we did um clarify in the RRP that the information submitted must be very clear. And that might sound obvious, but because of the various things that were um um being asked of the Lot twelve site. Um and the importance of disaggregating the costs, for example, the residential costs and the replacement cost of parking. Because housing subsidies can't be used for the parking subsidy. It it was very important for the information to be very, very clearly submitted. Um and based on that conversation in September, the final RFP included the ability for respondents to include. An off-site replacement parking um alternative. And and so you see some of these alternatives here. So the Lot twelve RFP allowed the respondent to do two things. First, because there were um so many ways in which developers could submit um a a plan. We wanted to be able to do an apples to apples comparison as much as possible. So all of the developers had to um incorporate a base financing scenario, which includes a four percent tax credit. Uh scenario, and then they had to um include an onsite uh parking scenario. Uh the developers had the choice, too, of also optionally including alternate scenarios. So a different financing scenario and um a replacement parking scenario that maybe. Has an off-site replacement or an in roof fee payment or or some other option. But that was optional and had to be in addition to the base scenario. So so based on all of um that um input gathering and confirming of the priorities, the RFP was initiated. Um December the sixteenth last year, it closed March the second. Uh there was a pre-submital conference to go over um all of the criteria and for respondents to ask questions. That created early January. Um after the close, uh we had a city team evaluate the submittals. And I should also say that would be Seifel and Raju Nadwana, um who are consultants. Um Seifel consulting and IPD who assisted staff in evaluating the proposals. Both from a financial economic perspective and from a parking design perspective, I believe is also with us on the Zoom call. Um and then we held interviews with um each of the respondents. There were five respondents to the RFP. This is a summary of evaluation criteria. It's listed in more detail in the RFP. But development program and the design, um certainly a significant component. And then the quality, thoroughness, uh clarity, uh and reasonableness of the financial strategy uh was a significant component as well. So based on the evaluation, uh and based on the interview performance, uh the the city team did. Um determine that there really were four very qualified developers. Um all of these developers um are 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 known and they have experience working in a variety of settings. Um that are relevant to Lot twelve. The city team did feel that EH emerged as a top ranking submittal. And then there is a group of um highly ranked um submittals as well with Eden, Mid Penn, and the related um Paul the Housing Corporation team. Just a quick summary of um all of the submittals, and you see them here in one place. Let me just take a moment to go over them. Um all of them did uh propose a hundred and twenty um units. And you see there the the weighted averages, and so that gives you a sense of where the um. The range of the affordable housing units are in terms of the income levels. So the higher their weighted average, they tend to are um are for higher income um residents, although still up to the eighty percent. And so EH had the lowest weighted average, so is a deeper affordable targeting. Uh while Mid Penn was on the higher range of uh fifty-eight percent uh weighted average. Uh for the non-residential components, um um all the developers expressed a desire to work with the city. And work with the community in terms of. in terms of what finally goes into the space. They did propose initial thoughts. And you see what they are here. EH talked about flexible uses, place making. Eden had a few different options regarding childcare, a nonprofit cafe. Mid Penn also had a childcare proposal, and wanted to sort of activate the corner, the corner of California Bryant, as well with some uses. And then Related PH had a variety of ideas as well, with a cafe, with community nonprofit space, et cetera. You see the heights there. They're all within the six-story limit that council has indicated that it would support. And then with the parking, this is a summary of the parking plan. All the developers did include, as required, 160 parking spaces replaced onsite. And you can see the different types of parking for the other uses as well, for the residential, for the non-residential, and then the total number of parking spaces. All of them submitted concepts for TDM and robust TDM. And this was another area where each of the developer teams mentioned that they want to work closely with the city to, if selected, the final robust package of what that is. All of the teams submitted either, sort of, I should say, at-grade and below-grade parking, whereas Mid Penn was the only team that submitted a standalone above-grade parking garage at the northern end of the site. And I will mention that the Related Paul the Housing Corporation team did include sort of a novel ground lease payment option as part of their submittal. And they did have three different financing strategies. This ground lease payment was part of each of those three scenarios. And the way it was articulated was the city could take that ground lease payment and contribute it back into the development and to provide the parking onsite, or the city could have the option of taking those funds and perhaps pooling it and building a facility elsewhere downtown. And so that was a concept that the Related Paul the Housing Corp. team had. And that'd be something, if they were the selected team, the city staff would have to really better understand how that would work and what it is, as it is a novel strategy. Here's a summary of the development costs. And the city team felt that EH submittal was probably the clearest, and had the costs comprehensively included in the RFP with clear delineation of the costs. So it helped the city team review and understand the estimates, and especially the residential cost and how it separates out from the parking cost. And so you can see the variation there. City team did feel that EH had a reasonable residential cost per unit, and had a couple of questions regarding Eden, sort of, on their lower side estimate, as was Mid Penn's. So you see the summary there. And then for the submittal requests, you can see the breakdown there. And just to summarize again, EH submitted one scenario, the base scenario, and they had a $7 million residential subsidy request, and that was their only subsidy request. And they have really tried to do a maximum external leveraging. So essentially, $13.5 for every $1 requested of the city. Eden had two scenarios, and so that led to sort of a wide subsidy range. And in one scenario, the total subsidy request would be 32 million. But in a preferred scenario that Eden identified, preferred for Eden, that drops all the way down to 2.5 million. And so part of the question, if they were the selected team, is to better understand the range of those subsidy requests. Mid Penn had one scenario, and their total subsidy request was 15.1 million, 7.1 for the affordable, 8 million for the parking garage. So if Mid Penn were the selected team, staff would want to better understand those subsidy requests, including certainly the 8 million request for the above-grade parking garage, and trying to understand a little bit more for some of the other teams, such as Eden, EH, and Related, where there's a below-grade parking structure, but there isn't a city parking subsidy request. And again, Related has three financing scenarios, and that ranges anywhere from 4.3 million up to 12.5 million for a total subsidy request. One of the scenarios that Related has, Related PH has, included an AMI level of up to 100% AMI, and that's above the 80% AMI maximum in the RFP. That's the version that has a 12.5 million total subsidy request. So just wanted to conclude by showing a few images here with EH's design and their site plan. And in a moment, each of the teams will be presenting, so you'll have the opportunity to see the images and other images as well. This is Eden's image from Mercy and Bryant, and their site plan, looking down from above. This is Mid Penn's image. This is also Mercy and Bryant, and that would be where the envisioned childcare facility would be. And their site plan with the parking garage, as you can see, on the north end, which is the right side of this image. And then Related PH is designed from a different angle, from California and Bryant, looking south. And then their site plan there as well. So the next step after council selects the preferred development team is to get everything ready and initiate the 90-day exclusive right to negotiate process with the team. We are targeting having the ground lease and the development disposition agreement, which would be developed during the negotiation process, to come back to council in the fall for consideration, assuming council approves it, and we stay on track. The goal is for the team to submit a formal planning application by the end of the year. It'll take probably a little over a year for the entitlement hearing process, and for council to hear that project in early 2022. Building process complete in mid-2023, two years for the construction, so fall of 2025, construction would be complete. So the recommendation is for council to select the preferred development team, and also to authorize the city manager designate to be able to initiate the negotiation agreement and to get that going. And to the extent that the 90-day period is not enough, there's forward progress, to authorize the city manager to extend that period for 60 days. There's a deposit associated with both 90-day and 60-day periods. And the final recommendation is for the council to adopt a resolution reserving $1 million from what we have been calling the successor agency fund. This is the official name of the fund, the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund. And adopting a resolution will allow the city to retain these funds and to apply it towards a lot 12 project. That concludes staff's presentation. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So now we will have the presentations by each of the applicants. And the four development teams will present in alphabetical order. Each team will have four minutes for their presentation, followed by council questions after each presentation. The city clerk will let you know when your time is up, as you probably have presentations, and we won't be able to show the time on the screen. So we will first start off with EH, and I believe I have Scott Johnson as the lead presenter. And I think we need a few moments to switch folks into the panelist box. Let's see. Scott, are you with us? Oh, yes, I see you. And if you can unmute yourself, please, that would be great.
Here I am.
There you are. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor Abe Koga and members of the council. My name is Scott Johnson, Director of Business Development for EH. My team that we've assembled is truly top tier with the experience and the know-how to partner with you to transform lot 12 into a community gem. You know, as our team thought about how best to respond to your lot 12 goals, we kept circling back to three central questions, which in effect underscore our value proposition to you. Number one, how do we reach a level of affordability that meets current as well as future community need? Number two, how do we achieve meaningful place making within the limits of cost control? Number three, how do we design an economically viable plan that reliably secures the necessary capital? As to our design approach, we envision well-articulated and rooftop solarized buildings respectful of neighboring contacts with a transition in height from five stories on Bryant Street to two and three stories facing our neighbors to the west, mediated by a delightful interior courtyard that gives future residents an outdoor space of their own, spanning the full length of the city block, and reaching out to overlook both California and Mercy Streets for an interactive two-way connection. We intend to create a community asset that, quite simply put, is an amazing place to live, work, connect, and prosper. One of the ways that we create that is to anchor the project with a generous public plaza that activates life at the corner of Bryant in California Street, in tandem with the community services and neighborhood commercial tenants that will function within the ground floor at each end of the building. As your partner, we'll deliver a beautiful design integrated with a range of cost-efficient sustainable features, including all-electric apartments, rooftop solar, biofiltration, healthy materials, and many more features that exceed the city's sustainability requirements. EH fully embraces Cal Green and REACH standards, and we're aiming here for a very high lead rating. We propose to replace the city's surface lot with a below-grade public parking facility in tandem with new at-grade parking improvements. Let me call out that we've designed the at-grade parking structure to allow for conversion to future alternative use, anticipating the parking need and demand will diminish over time. Our immediate goal is to transform Bryant Street into a safe, public streetscape that embraces walkability and mobility. So definitely, beautiful design, inspired place making, but how does that sync with our affordable housing program? Well, truth be told, our proposal goes right to the heart of your town's documented need and demand. And accordingly, we're proposing a community of 120 deed-restricted apartments with rent tiers ranging from 30% to 80% of AMI, and including a set aside of permanently supportive housing for the most vulnerable members of your community. And, and, under your further direction, we're prepared to pursue a local live-work preference for the lease-up of the currently projected 80 non-PSH set-aside units. The residential mix and affordability levels that are stitched into our program will unlock County Measure A, State HC, and 4% low-income housing tax credits. Let me repeat, our unit mix, affordability levels, and PSH set-asides are programs programmed to obtain early support from the county, which in tandem with your below-market leasing capital contribution, is the local leverage to the far greater capital stack that transforms lot 12 from vision to reality. We're honored to be under consideration to partner with you, and we're ready to turn that vision into reality. Thank you. And I and my full team who are here with us tonight look forward to your questions and to further dialogue. Oh, and by the way, if you're so, if you're so interested and inclined, either now or during Q and A, Veronica from Sarah Architects is prepared to take you on a flight to see a video, a video trip of our, of our design proposal.
Great. Thank you very much. Any council members with questions for EH? Councilmember Metacek?
Thank you. So I do have a couple of questions. I want to make sure I heard you correct, that the only units that the county would control in terms of who would be able to live there are the 40 Measure A-funded units.
Correct. Yes, under the county's Measure A Type 2 program, one-third of the units will be set aside for, as PSH units. One-third will, are structured as 30% AMI level rents, and the balance up to 80%. It's the 40 PSH units, that, that one-third of units that the county controls through their CES referral process.
Okay. I noticed that there were quite a few of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, but very few three bedrooms. I was wondering if you could speak to the thinking behind that mix?
Sure. Yeah, happy to. You know, when we came forward, we've analyzed the property a number of different ways. In fact, when we came forward during the RFQ stage, we had a greater mix of three-bedroom units. What that led to, however, was the need for an additional story. So we had one, we had greater mass, height, and it required an additional level of subterranean parking. So in the spirit of responding to the city's request, that applicants look at reducing costs, minimizing the city's subsidy, maximizing leverage, you know, we, we retooled our design proposal and our financing proposal to be consistent with, with the county's Type A. And in doing that, in, in reducing the number of three-bedroom units, we were able to lower the height down by one level and to reduce one level of subterranean parking. The truth of the matter is, if, if we're fortunate enough to be selected as your partner, and as we get into the further collaboration with the city, if there's a desire to integrate a greater number of three-bedroom units, we have a way of doing that.
And you also were including stackers. How many stackers were you including?
Is it appropriate, you know, my full team is here. And just by way of question, is it appropriate for me at this point in time to ask that certain members of my team be added to the conversation?
Actually, Scott, this is Dave Egan. I'm a Director of Development and Construction at EH, and I can take that question if you don't mind.
Thank you, Dave.
We had, in order to get our parking requirement, we went to 50 stacker units, and they're at the grade level, at grade level. And we raised the ceiling in that area for two reasons. One's to accommodate the, the stackers, and two, to create an inviting place should that space at some point in the future be transitioned to a usable interior space. So that hopefully answers the question.
Yeah. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have Councilmember McAllister, please.
Yeah, let me tail along with a couple of questions that Councilmember Metacek asked. When you said you could do three-bedroom apartments, could you give me a little bit of insight of how you would do that? And how many would you put in?
Scott, really, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Veronica. Veronica from Sarah, Sarah Architecture.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. So we've taken a look at what we could add as far as the number of units. And, you know, if we were to add an additional floor, which we could do, the implications would be that we could add one level of 26 units. Now, I haven't broken it down into three-bedroom units. I'd have to go back and look at that. But we could certainly add 26 more units in a full sixth floor. That would increase our need for parking by 13, which we feel we can accommodate within the space that we currently have. And then another option is we potentially could increase by half a floor, which would be, allow us to step back along Bryant, so we, we aren't as imposing on the street. And that would just increase the parking stalls by seven. But we could certainly look at, in that, by increasing the number, as Scott was suggesting, we could incorporate more three bedrooms.
Okay. And And would it be asking too much to sort of get an idea of the financial impact of that?
That's a Scott question.
Exactly. Yes, it is. Yes, there would clearly be a financial impact. When we reimagined our design proposal and reimagined it from the RFQ phase into the RFP phase, that led to a $5.5 million cost reduction, cost savings. By reducing one level on the building and reducing one level of parking, that led to $5.5 million savings. You know, generally speaking, depending on the details of the number of three-bedroom units and the depth of the additional subterranean parking that would be required, you know, that would give you somewhat of a range based on the initial design that we came forward with.
On the repurposed units, parking stalls, you said that they're on the ground level, and you said there are about 50 spaces, or 50 stalls at ground level?
There's 50 stackers. In a two-high configuration, there's 23 residential standard stalls, which are not stackers. There are 14 public standard stalls that would serve the public areas. But there are no stalls currently allocated for corner retailer public.
But I'm just saying, if you decided to reallocate, you know, down the road future and turn that into residential or something, how many stalls? Was that 50 stalls?
That would leave you with the basement level parking, which is 146 stalls.
146, okay.
And it would never be converted to residential. It would be more community space, retail space that the city needed at that time.
If the city wanted more local preference, and would you be able to do that and not base your financing on Measure A?
We could do that. The consequence would be that we would not go after Measure A funds from the county, which might, if we weren't able to find the gap funds, might require a larger subsidy from the city. And we were trying to minimize that as much as possible in our current proposal.
Okay. And my other one was about placemaking. So, and this is for all developers, if you come along, I'm going to ask you the same question. Is, this is going to be home to 120 units, potentially to 300 people. And what in your project is going to make this a community for those people that live on site? We seem to be adding a lot of auxiliary projects on the side and on the street, and sort of takes away from these, to my opinion, that takes away from their home. What are you doing to help make this, all these 120-unit people become a community that interact with each other?
Yeah, yeah, great, great question, Councilmember. Kristin, Director of Resident Services, is also on the line. She heads up that piece of our life-affirming work. Kristin, if you can respond to that.
Sure. Hi there. I'm Kristin Taylor. I'm the Director of Resident Services with EH Housing. And EH Housing has been providing services for over 50 years to a really diverse population among many different communities. So we have an internal framework to deliver services where it is really built on providing a sense of place through dignity, purpose, and connectedness. So we have, our approach is called STABLE, where we have six priority areas that are really foundational, not only to housing retention, but to building that community. So, you know, while we do build in our after-school programs and family engagement, we're really mindful of the local community and meeting those needs and being really aware of resident input, voice and choice, and what the true needs are. We don't prescribe it. You know, we are incredibly open to hearing from the folks that live there, their friends and family. You know, we've had some initial conversations with really deep-rooted providers in the area to get a sense of those overall needs, and we're incredibly prepared to meet those with programming onsite that really is empowering and enables people to thrive, as well as bringing in the local community and really leveraging the culture, you know, and the art that's already existing. You know, so that, you know, we'd be really excited to continue that commitment to thriving and empowerment within the community based on our framework and with the input of other local stakeholders, which truly is rooted in the residents who would live there. And if anyone else from my team would like to jump in around the design as well, please do.
Yeah, I would like to just say, we do have some excellent outdoor and indoor tenant-only spaces for them to congregate and to do things. And perhaps it could best be described by Veronica at Sarah, where those spaces are and how it flows.
Yeah. Would it be appropriate for me to share the video at this point? Because you can really get a sense of a lot of it if I run you through it.
Actually, we have other questions, so.
Okay, sure, no problem. I'll just say then, just to address the architecture of it, the way that we have designed the building, we wanted it to not be inward-focused only. We wanted it to really connect with the community. So it's for that reason that we created the plaza that's flanked on two sides by the community service areas that Kristin was just describing. We wanted there to be a lot of activity there, people coming and going. Additionally, we designed this beautiful muse that runs the length of the building at the podium level, and it peaks over, and you really can get a sense of the activity that's happening at that podium level because the community room is there. You're going to see people outside, you know, interacting at that level and then looking down onto the plaza. And we took the opportunity, you know, through our analysis of the site, to really think about greater Mountain View. And we located these two spaces, we specifically located them at this corner of California and Bryant because it was the closest to what felt like a really vibrant area in Mountain View. And we wanted to have that portion of the building really drawing attention and engaging. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Hicks?
So, am I unmuted? Yes. So I'll also ask a similar question to all applicants, and that's maybe the opposite of Councilmember McAllister's question about how the project will serve the residents and make them feel like a community. This project is in, I think, a special place in Mountain View. There are many special places in Mountain View, but this particular one is right next to the library, the Pioneer Park, the Performing Arts Center, and kind of the heart of Mountain View with the, you know, where our restaurant district starts. It's a place that a lot of people first bring their children, that is, the library, or let their children run free. And I'm wondering, with that mix of uses, how it will fit into that neighborhood, fit in with that community, is my first question.
Yeah, no, that's great. And I'm going to let, I'm going to turn it back over to Kristin because she's done a lot of work and thought and engagement already with some of your community partners in that regards. But what you've just described as community amenities and neighborhood amenities, being right downtown, close to the library, the park, that's phenomenal. I mean, our design program is intended to support, reflect, and engage directly with those assets. And Kristin, if you can show us some more of your thoughts in that regards.
Sure. So, you know, we're very familiar with some of the amenities that surround the proposal with Lot 12, like we just spoke about with the Performing Arts Center and the library and a lot of our existing communities. We certainly leverage those partnerships, not just to bring them onsite with, you know, bringing, inviting the community in, but also really engaging our residents, you know, out into the local surroundings as well, you know, making sure that it's really integrated. We know that sometimes, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, we really do want to talk about we're all neighbors, you know, we are all in this together, and how is it that we're all empowering and thriving as one community, whether it is through some type of public art, you know, we host large national nights out, you know, where we're parts of the entire community and make sure that everyone, you know, feels invited and included. You know, we did originally seek out to get some input from the community services agency around, you know, not just the needs of their constituents, but of the greater need of Mountain View as well, so that we can be really mindful of that as we do, you know, continue to build out this program, you know, through the design as well as, you know, the programmatic structure on building in the community spaces as well.
And then my next question, you've run through this to some degree, but what, you know, when we're looking at this project, what things do you, I always hear that we're picking a partner, but many things are flexible. What things do you see as, I don't know if this may be a better question for staff, but can try to answer, what things do you see as, this is what we're picking and what things are flexible? You've named some of them already.
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. I think the flexibility, first and foremost, goes to the non-residential spaces that are on the street. Certainly, Kristin and Scott have engaged in conversation with several active participates within the city. And we wanted to leave flexibility in space design. We could convert it to the area along California to a combination of daycare and some other community-oriented service. The space on Mercy and Bryant could be another, an extension of the library. It could be an art space. It could be something related to the Arts Theater District. It could be a variety of things, and we won't really know what the city wants until we're selected, and then we can take a deep dive in the opportunities that lie within Mountain View and work with council, city staff, and the various players in the community itself, and then come back to you with sound ideas. And we can have a collaborative back and forth on what best suits your vision for this space. But we're trying to be flexible in that regard, so that we could give you what you wanted.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, if I can jump it. So that's great, yes. The design program has been intentionally thought through from a flexible, you know, we've already talked about how previously we envisioned one higher, an additional floor, a story. You know, if the city was interested in a greater number of three-bedroom units, for example, we could look at that. We know that it works. On the parking side, you know, I know there's been some discussion about the potential for an off-site parking accommodation, perhaps partnering with some other development interests. We've engaged in very preliminary exploratory discussions with Marwood Development around the potential for collaborating on an off-site parking arrangement. That would reflect, Councilmember, you know, our desire and ability to pursue solutions from a flexibility standpoint in that regards as well.
Do you have any more questions, Councilmember Hicks?
No.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Great, thank you. I just have one question. So on your attachment on page 13 that you submitted of your slide deck when you go over the housing program and the financing strategy, I was just wondering if you could share with us, you're one of two applicants who just came forward with one scenario, one financing strategy, and I was wondering if you could share a little bit more about the approach that you had to, had to it, to your submittal.
In terms of an alternative, a Plan B financing scenario?
I think a little bit more about why you chose the plan, the scenario you chose.
Yes, yes. So, you know, again, from a leveraging standpoint, from a financially feasible standpoint, from what gets these, this new community realistically built within budget and within a reasonable timeframe, your ability to leverage the county funds, the half a billion dollars' worth of housing bond-generated resources that are waiting for development proposals like this to come forward. You know, your ability to leverage those dollars is, in our view, and as we've represented it, both from a financial structuring standpoint as well as a design standpoint and a programming standpoint, that is a key driver to the financing structure that we've brought forward for your consideration. We think that those, when the County of Santa Clara came together collectively and overwhelmingly approved that bond, you know, that was a public policy direction taken. We want to tap into those resources, and we want to join you in doing so.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions.
All right, any other questions for EH? If not, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next development team, which is Eden Housing. And I have, oh, can you hear me? We'll move on to Eden Housing, and Andrea Osgood is our lead presenter.
Just give me one moment, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Okay, can everyone see my screen and hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Andrea Osgood, and I am Vice President of Realty for Eden Housing. We're excited to be here tonight to discuss another potential partnership with the city, which would complement both Studio 819 Apartments, which we completed in 2015, and La Vinida, which is currently in pre-development. There we go. To overview, our proposal includes all the city-required elements, 160 parking, public parking spaces, and 120 residential units, along with additional community uses and features to activate all sides of the block. The Childcare Center is located here at the corner of Mercy and Bryant and will be operated by the YWCA. A cafe and teaching kitchen operated by a deaf community nonprofit anchors the opposite corner of California. Along Bryant, the residential lobbies and a small retail kiosk open into a community plaza to emveen this mid-block area. Finally, a landscaped pathway along the backs of the site provides a calm, lush buffer for the adjacent residential community. We have four great proposals before you, but I wanted to highlight the key advantages to Eden's proposal. First, we tailored our project to serve a variety of households, from low-income families to those experiencing homelessness and living in vehicles. Second, the YWCA of Silicon Valley is committed to being our childcare partner. And finally, our proposal limits the amount of city subsidy required. We designed the building and programming, program financing to respond to the city council's goals of providing a variety of housing options in both income ranges and unit sizes, as shown here. Similar to other proposals, we are leveraging County Measure A funding, but rather than serving a permanent supportive housing population, we specifically decided to focus on a rapid rehousing population. We chose this for a few reasons. First, this population is characterized by episodic homelessness or homelessness that is caused by economic hardship, rather than permanent supportive housing population, which is more chronically homeless and suffering from mental health or substance abuse. As well, this population often includes children and families. Finally, people living in RVs and cars are more likely to get housing in the rapid rehousing model than in traditional permanent supportive housing, which could make this project an important part of the exit strategy for households currently taking advantage of the city's safe parking program. We are thrilled to have the YWCA as a partner on this project to operate the Childcare Center. That would be a benefit to both our residents and the greater community. The YWCA is a natural partner on this project. The Y W C A is a natural partner on this project as they understand the unique needs of a rapid rehousing population and have a strong relationship with Santa Clara County. Tannis Crosby, the CEO of the Y W C A is here with us tonight and able to answer any questions you may have. Subsidy, as currently structured without any state funding sources, the required city subsidy is a modest two point five million. We can certainly look to add state level funding programs, however, these programs can extend the time required to complete a development. I wanted to briefly address staff's concerns regarding our estimated construction costs. We worked with a G C on a budget specific to this project and also compared these costs with other projects that are currently in construction or starting soon. We're confident in the cost presented, but to address this concern, we did do some stress testing, and even if we were to assume higher costs, we would still be able to keep the city subsidy at two point five million. I'm happy to discuss that more in Q and A. Looking a little bit at design, wanted to talk, uh, I talked earlier about how we activated all edges of the property. We also thought a lot about the residential, um, uses over here and that was, at that western edge. You can see that we put the main bulk of the building here along Bryant to get away from that residential use. And more specifically here in the section, you can see how we added a public pathway, which is fifteen feet long, and further put these large courtyards on the podium level, which means that we have a buffer of over eighty-five feet that is either at grade or only one level up for these residential neighbors here. This rendering shows our public parking, um, parklet or plaza, which is at the mid-block of Bryant. And this is a rendering showing the corner at Mercy and Bryant where the childcare center will be located. And this design is just a starting point and can obviously easily be adjusted with feedback from the city. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. We'd like to thank staff for all their hard work on this R F D process as well and be happy to partner with you on this important development and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Eden from councilmembers? Councilmember McAllister?
Yes, thank you. So I'll ask you basically the same questions that I asked the other one going forward. Can you do this project without Measure Eight dollars if we want a more of a local preference?
We certainly could, but I think it would take longer as we would have to go after various state funding programs. Yes.
Okay. And again, my question about that this is going to be housing for a hundred and twenty units, this is their home, and yet we're detracting their home by adding childcare at one end, some other projects at the other end. What can you do to make this physically and tangible a home for these people? Not services, but the physical layout that would make this feel at home where their people can meet openly and congregate together and children can play and adults can mingle? What can you do to make this a home and not a multiplex for the community?
Sure. I mean, I'll start with design because I think, um, for any home, you need a place to do those kinds of things, um, and you need a place to do those, um, those kinds of activities together, um, as a community. Of course, not right now, but, um, when we're back to being able to be closer to each other than six feet, um, we've included two really great community rooms, um, that we, especially in our more family oriented property like this one would be, we would have lots of, um, enriched services offered by our in-house services agency, um, that really focuses on children a lot. We have homework club, um, reading, um, literacy programs as well, and, um, we also have computer labs and those kinds of liter- literacy, digital literacy programs in those spaces. We also saw in our site plan, um, large courtyards with open space that are specific and, um, exclusive for the residential, um, uh, tenants that would be able to use those spaces to privately, um, relax outside, have picnics and barbecues, um, on-site. As for the ground floor uses, I mean, it, those are meant to serve both our residents, but also the greater community. And particularly with the Y W C and the C A and the ground floor, we know that many of the residents, um, will, will take advantage of those childcare services. And so I think that'll be a really great component of, um, making that, this home really a home for our, our residents.
So I, I'm having, where is your outdoors? I mean, you, let me phrase that question. What kind of outdoor space is made to make people co-mingle, play together, et cetera? I see a one photo where it says it's a parking garage, then on another layout it says community benefits dash residential uses, and it says common open space. So where is the open space for this project, for the people that live on this project?
Sure. I don't know if I can share my screen again, but, um, it's up on the second level, um, that green space, um, which would be programmed. Um, right now, it's, it's just shown kind of more generically as green, but in those kinds of spaces, we would work with the architect to add in barbecues, tables, place structures, different things like that for the, the residents and families.
Trees, et cetera, greenery.
Trees, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah.
And would you be able to repurpose your ground floor parking?
I believe so, but I'm going to defer to William Duncanson, our architect, to talk more articulately about that.
Uh, yes, the ground floor, can everybody hear me? I, I hope unmuted successfully. Um, yes, the, I mean, if there's a future where parking is either, if there's less parking desired, um, or no parking desired for the residential portion of the building, um, that area will have sufficient ceiling height to either be repurposed for, um, you know, additional commercial activity or, um, you know, with some more effort, conceivably more dwelling units, but, um, uh, yes, I mean, there's, there's the volume to do so, and the building could be reconfigured accordingly.
Okay. Now, how many three bedrooms, how many two bedrooms?
Uh, I'm, oh, go ahead.
I know that off the top of my head because it's about the financing. We have twenty-five percent of both, so fifty percent of the project is two and three bedrooms.
So fifty percent? So, okay. And then you got studios and one bedrooms?
For the other fifty.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty units, are they broken down fifty-fifty, so twenty-five perc- twenty-five percent are two bedrooms and twenty-five percent are three bedrooms?
Yes, that's a requirement of the funding.
So thirty-thirty? So sixty units are two or more?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Maticek? Thank you. Um, I also want to verify, um, as I did with the first presentation, um, the ability to do local preferences. So is the only funding source you have that you can't do that is the Measure A funding?
Yeah, for those forty units that would be targeted to the rapid rehousing population, yes.
Forty units?
Yes.
Okay.
That was similar to, yeah.
Um, so you said that that would be a good opportunity in those rapid rehousing for folks who are living in vehicles, um, potentially to go into those, and yet if we don't have a say over specifically who gets to have those units, um, it could be people living in vehicles throughout the county, correct?
I mean, technically, yes, um, but I think, Suzy, if you're able to sort of talk a little bit about what we know about those populations from the county, um, to address that.
Yeah, I, uh, Suzy Kusamani, here, Director of Development. Um, we talked with the, um, with the county Measure A staff, um, to try to get at this answer of, uh, can we do any kind of local preference for Measure A units? And, um, unfortunately, through several conversations, that answer keeps coming back as no. Um, but we thought that rapid rehousing would be a better option than permanent supportive housing, knowing how important, um, the local preference is for the Mountain View community. You know, when, when tenants are selected by the county for permanent supportive housing units, um, the county is selecting, um, the chronically homeless first, so these are people who are, um, living in shelters, um, or on streets and have been homeless for more than a year, um, and have some sort of physical or mental, physical disability or mental illness. But i- if you're someone who lives in an RV or a car, um, your chances of getting selected for a permanent supportive housing unit are really quite low. It's, uh, after they get through the chronically homeless population, um, that they'll start to look at this other population. Whereas with the rapid rehousing population, um, you know, they're specifically targeting people who, um, kind of just need more of a hand, need, um, a place, um, to, need to kind of hand up for a year or so to get back on their feet. Um, and we think that this would be, um, just a better mix or a better, better suited for, um, for what Mountain View is looking for and the type of homeless population. And I know that, um, the city, um, is seeing a lot of, um, we can't guarantee that, um, the Mountain View, um, residents will be selected for all of these units, but in terms of kind of the best chance of getting, um, the county to select, uh, residents who are from Mountain View, we thought this was the best chance of that.
Yeah, and I think, um, another thing that we could do is also make sure, um, that the, the folks that are living in RVs and vehicles in Mountain View are pulled from that list, is to make sure they're on the list. And I think we'll have plenty of time as we work through pre-development to work with you, and the great thing is you have that safe parking program that's going on, so you know who those people are. And you're, you, we would be able to sort of coordinate, um, services effort to go out and make sure that those people, we work with those people that you have, um, information on to get them on the county's list. And then, of course, when it comes around to time to lease up, we make sure that they're doing the things that they need to do to get their application in, um, and to get pulled off that county list. So I think the answer is technically yes, um, but I think there's a lot of things that we can do together to plan to make this part of, you know, making that safe parking program, um, a real success.
So, um, I, I don't know if you know the answer to this, um, but, you know, we always have long waiting lists here for affordable housing in Mountain View. Um, are the county's lists as long as ours with thousands of people on them?
Um, I believe so, Suzy. Do you?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure. I would imagine so, unfortunately.
Okay.
Um, we do know that the, the tenant population or the popul- the household type between permanent supportive and rapid rehousing is quite different, um, and that the rapid rehousing, um, list is much larger, um, families and people with children.
Uh, and I do know that the county list is not first come, first served, so just because you're already on it doesn't mean that you're at the top of the list. And they're, they're, uh, continuously re-sorting, um, to match people with the right type of housing.
Okay. And, um...
Sorry, this is Wayne. I, I wanted to just add a couple of comments. Um, um, we, we have worked with the county, and I believe Consuelo Hernandez, um, is also on the Zoom call and could potentially provide some additional color. Um, but we've worked with her and her team closely, um, to, um, uh, work in finding employees and residents of Mountain View who can occupy county-funded, um, uh, units. So just as an example, in Eagle Park, I believe there are sixteen units that are funded in partnership with the county. Um, and there is a limitation on the formal live work policy. Been working with the county and doing targeted outreach and, uh, working with, um, with their queue, um, we're able to occupy fourteen out of the sixteen units with Mountain View residents or employees. And, and I think that's the approach, um, generally with the, the projects that we're looking at, it would be the approach that we would want to continue to work, uh, with Consuelo. So although there may be some, um, policy limitations from a, from a, from a practice perspective, um, there are ways that we can, we can partner together to really maximize the number of Mountain View, uh, residents and employees. And, um, yeah, yes, if Consuelo's on the line, and it would be helpful for to add some color. Um, I don't see her on my screen here, but I think she's on.
Yes, um, Cons- Mr. Hernandez is in our attendee box.
I can make her, I can make her a panelist if you'd like, Mayor, or can I mute her? However you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute her, not, oh, yes, Ms. Hernandez, can you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Consuelo Hernandez, Acting Deputy Director for the Office of Supportive Housing. I first wanted to say that I appreciate the developers so far trying to explain our very complex system, um, and I appreciate the council's questions in terms of whether we are able to have a preference on the units that are set aside for supportive housing. And I did want to mention, um, that although we do have a preference through our continuum of care and queue for the supportive housing units, Measure A actually funds not just those units that are set aside, so the forty units that both developers have spoken about, but the E L I and the V L I units that are included in their proposals are also covered through Measure A by way of leverage. So even though we're not referring people into those units, we count them towards our progress, um, and our goals from Measure A. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the way that the process works in terms of the referrals. I can echo what, um, Wayne just mentioned, mentioned about the number of people that we've served. Um, so far, in addition to the Eagle Park, with Measure A, there are three other households from Mountain View that have been served. Um, two of them are currently living in Villas on the Park in downtown San Jose, and one is in, um, being served in the city of Morgan Hill. So even though they might not, um, be served directly in one of your Mountain View sites, they are being provided with housing throughout the county.
So I just want to clarify, when you said that you count the other units that are not technically Measure A funded toward your progress, I just want to verify that you do not control any sort of waitlist or anything for those units with Measure A.
That is correct, Councilmember. Or what we try to do is work with the city staff. If there is a local preference, that we work together to implement that and enforce it on the non-supportive housing units.
Okay. And then, um, a question about the open space for next to the childcare. Um, is that limited in terms of its use by the children in the childcare, or can that be used by people who live in the complex?
Um, I believe it needs to be limited to the childcare. Um, Tannis Crosby is the CEO. If you could confirm that, or if there's any opportunity to share on the weekends.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. Uh, first of all, I want to share how delighted I am to be part of this project. Um, the Y W C A is very committed to affordable housing development and to providing a full continuum of service to families and to the community. So to specifically answer the question about the use of the playground site, we currently have this very issue with a site that we both own and operate in downtown San Jose with respect to affordable housing and childcare. Predominantly, the space is used by the childcare because we must not fail to comply with licensing and provision of safe playground. However, there has been opportunity to conceive of flexible option on weekends. It would just require a lot of, um, tenant communication, programming, support. So generally speaking, we keep it limited for the playground use to ensure that we must not fail to comply with health, safety, and licensing. However, there have been possibilities where we can, with planning, um, make it, uh, more possible. But here, the benefit is we are a strong partner with Eden, we have been for many years, and so I, I believe that lots of options and possibilities are, are possible with great communication and robust, um, management, um, and the high-quality management that we've experienced with Eden.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Councilmember Hicks.
So I, I won't belabor the question because I, I asked it earlier and I assumed you were listening, I assume you were listening in, but the question is that this is a, a special place in the city with the, where a lot of people let their children run free, middle schoolers, grade schoolers, library, uh, park, and then the restaurant district starts there. What, um, care of you can to make sure that it'll be a good fit in the, with the neighbors and in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we strive, um, to fit into all of our neighbor neighborhoods across, um, our development pipeline, but I think specifically here, that was why, one of the reasons why we chose the rapid rehousing population, um, just because it felt like, um, it would be m- more family oriented and family friendly. Um, and so that is a big part of, you know, first, starting with that tenant population. And then, of course, working with our architect on some initial thoughts around, um, how we're activating the street and, um... and adding into what's already really great amenities around. But thinking about how we could complement those amenities as well.
Okay, thank you.
See, Councilmember McAllister next.
A couple of, I'd like to follow up with Councilmember Maticek's questions for Consolo. Consolo. Who, who pays for the rapid rehousing? Does Measure A, once the housing's there, who provides the services and who pays for it?
Thank you, council member. Great question. So Measure A actually can't be used for services. So the county, through a combination of continuum of care grants and County General Fund, pays for the services.
Okay. And a question for TNS. Is your childcare 100% subsidized?
It's, our current continuum of service is upwards of about 80% subsidized. We also provide sliding-scale tuition for families that do not qualify for subsidy.
How much are, if you give a percentage, how many are 100% subsidized?
About 80%.
About 80%? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, I'd like to ask a follow-up question on the childcare issue. So we have a, the city has a childcare center that we've opened and have an operator running. And we've, over the years, set aside certain percentage for lower-income families. But the challenge has been that the families are unable to get subsidies to use those spots. So how do you go about getting subsidized spots for the children?
What an excellent question. So the question is, how do we get subsidized spaces for the families that qualify? And it's through a variety of means. We have state funding. We are a licensed childcare provider for the California State Preschool Program. We also work with local subsidy providers. There is also a net new state program that has more flexible subsidy. We were ranked in the top 10% of applicants across the state and are awaiting the funding award amounts. So the YWCA provides a variety of options for providing subsidized care. I'd also like to share that we provide a sliding-scale tuition, one of the few providers that do. And this is because families that earn less than about $48,000 a year do not qualify for fully subsidized spaces. So the YWCA provides sliding-scale tuition for families that earn less than the average median income. So if you make less than $70,000 but more than 48, we provide a fairly robust subsidy up until those who make twice the median income. We're committed to quality, accessible, developmentally appropriate childcare. And at this site, our plan is to provide 90 licensed spaces of childcare for both the residents and for the community.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions for the Eden team? No? All right, well, thank you very much. And we will move on to our next development team, which is Mid Penn with Jan Londonfall as the lead. Welcome, Jan. Take a few seconds to switch folks into our panelist box. Oh, okay. And there is Jan, welcome. Please feel free to start.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great, okay, I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen. Good evening. My name is Jan Londonfall. I'm the Chief Real Estate Development Officer at Mid Penn Housing. 2020 marks Mid Penn Housing's 50th year. And in fact, Mid Penn developed our very first community here in Mountain View in 1971. Since then, we've partnered with the city to not only develop new communities here in town, but also to reinvest in them and add density such as what we did here at Paulson Park and what we are currently doing now at Shorebreeze Apartments on Shoreline. We are invested in the community. Our staff live here. Our property management and services teams build relationships with our neighbors, community partners, and residents. Relationships that are more important now than ever as we support our residents during this crisis. Our work on this proposal started with conversations with elected officials, community leaders, and local civic institutions. This is foundational to our approach to any new development. This is how we do our work. These conversations informed every aspect of what we are about to show you. We consulted widely, and we would intend to continue to do so. There are three key elements to our proposal. We're proposing ground-floor childcare in partnership with the Santa Clara County Office of Education. What makes them an outstanding partner is that they not only come to the table knowing the need they want to serve, which is providing a wide range of childcare options for Mountain View families, but also with the resources to do so. Of course, we're also proposing 120 new affordable homes, and I'll share more about that in a moment. Our parking solution is proposed as an above-ground structure, and we chose this for two reasons. First, wayfinding. If the public can find the public parking spaces, they will use them. Second, it affords a flexible ground-floor use that can not only support the current farmer's market, but can also adapt over time as parking needs change. And we recognize that there are trade-offs with this approach. $8 million is the all-in actual cost of the public portion of the garage. That's the lowest cost to construct on a per-space basis, period. We chose to lead with a conservative and realistic financing approach. However, there are several additional ideas that we can explore to reduce that all-in cost. First, we could include the replacement parking in the tax credit basis. This is an emerging and has yet untested approach. As a result, we did not lead with this. But we have been watching this approach carefully and believe it shows, believe it shows promise. So much so that we are now considering using the structure in downtown San Mateo. And should we do so here, it will reduce the all-in cost by nearly half. Second, we've assumed that the public parking remains free. However, if the city wished to charge for the parking, we could leverage a loan against that parking revenue to further reduce that upfront cost. Now to our affordable housing program, which has been designed to support and preserve the economic diversity in Mountain View. We are building units the market straight up doesn't. Specifically, 25% of our proposed homes are three-bedroom, in addition to studios, ones, and twos. This is because we know what the need is. Our waitlist for three-bedroom homes in Mountain View is five times the number of homes we have available. The inclusion of three-bedroom apartments is also critical to our competitiveness for tax-exempt bonds, something that is crucial in the current financing environment. The household incomes we serve are evenly distributed from extremely low to missing middle, and 100% of the homes will have a preference for people who live or work in Mountain View. We're also proposing to include a preference for homeless families in the Mountain View-Whitman School District. This is the kind of targeted local preference that you are not able to do with Measure A funds and that could be easily expanded to include other districts in Mountain View. Mid Penn has financed 35 projects in the last five years. We have direct, comparable, and current experience realizing projects just like this. And we have a local development team that is ready to get to work. The Lot 12 RFP required we put our ideas on paper. And we welcome the opportunity to dialogue with you to test and improve upon those ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from councilmembers for Mid Penn, the Mid Penn team? Councilmember McAllister?
I might as well be fair with everybody and ask the same question, so. Jan, you should know what's coming, so I will ask you the first, that this is a community. This is somebody's home. And you are adding auxiliary uses on the side. So how do you physically, with open space and indoor space, make this feel like somebody's home with 120 units that live there?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Felix Yung, our Director of Business Development, to take that question.
Hi, thank you. And we have thought about this very deliberately and created a great public and private separation between the different uses. And without the benefit of being able to show the design, but you have that in your packet, the residents are really in the middle of the, of the block. There's a private courtyard area with all of the resident amenities at that same level, so they can flow in and out of their private courtyard in their amenity spaces, while the two ends on the public streets on Mercy and California have their own functions and each relating to the the amenities and adjacencies next to those areas. So this kind of actually addresses both Councilmember McAllister's and Councilmember Hicks' questions about the private residents as well as the, how it relates to the neighborhood. And I want to turn this over to John, our architect from Perkins &amp; Will, to talk a little bit more about it.
Right, thanks, thanks Felix. Well, you've pretty well covered it all. I mean, I think it's, the key thing about this site is that it is 450 feet long, and it's not the same site end to end. But we've done a very good job, I think, of making a real front door for the residents right in the middle of the block with all of their services, their own community. Whereas, and then we've kind of given back to the city both ends of the site for much more public-facing uses. So I think that's the real, that's the real trick.
Okay. So I'm looking at the slide here, number four on your presentation. And it shows a courtyard. Is that, how many stories up is that?
That is at ground level. The courtyard for the residents, as well as the play area for the childcare, are both ground level.
It flows in off the street.
Okay. So the buildings that, where it says office and fitness and community room, all that buildings there go up, they're all, it's surrounded by four-story buildings?
Six-story on the front on Bryant, and then four-story on either side.
Okay, so the whole, it's all six sto-, okay. Is it all six stories where it says community room? That's all six stories?
Yes, right there it is.
Okay, so the lobby, that's all six stories too?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay. And I just got to ask you about the above-ground parking garage. Why did, I mean, you talked about it, so other people went below ground. Has that been a consideration?
Yes. We gave it a lot of consideration. First and foremost, we heard from the folks in the community that we spoke to about the desire to maximize the number of homes that could be available to Mountain View residents with a live-work preference. So that really drove us to look for the most cost-efficient parking solution to really minimize our dependency on those county or other state sources that would bring with them some of the strings that might impact that implementation of that local preference. That was the decision first and foremost. And I'll let Felix add to that.
Yeah, I think we are flexible. And so we have, we are currently working on an underground garage in Belmont. And we've done underground garages. And we've done podium garages, and we are doing above-ground structures, standalone structures in downtown San Mateo. And based on all of those, that experience, we, we know where each one prices. And we know that the structure parking is the most cost-effective to park this number of vehicles. And when we looked at the, the program that's prescribed in the RFP in terms of the number of units and the number of parking stalls and the amount of community-serving uses, we worked with the architect and figured out this, what we're proposing that fits on the site, and it fits in the volume without having to go underground and incurring additional cost. Our experience is by undergrounding a stall, it doubles the cost relative to structure parking. So that's what we were trying to avoid, but, but, and I think simultaneously, we also wanted to make that as much of an amenity to the public as possible. So I think, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for public art. And it's an opportunity that we, we're using to create this flexible space on the ground floor that's open to the, to the streets, so that it can be used for special events. And it has other benefits of, you know, throughout the entire block, having one single curb cut that enters into our parking structure. So I think there's a lot of, there are some benefits, and there are certainly some drawbacks as well. But that's something we want to explore with the city.
And the last question? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to add that, you know, that's, that's one of the challenges with an RFP process is where we've got to put our ideas down on paper. And it, it's, it doesn't give us the opportunity to really have a dialogue around some of those trade-offs. And so we definitely want to express that we understand that a standalone parking garage on that corner has to be done very thoughtfully and intentionally and successfully from a design standpoint. And that there may be other solutions that are really worth exploring and having a dialogue around those kinds of trade-offs. And that's exactly what we've done, working with the city of San Mateo on the project that we're doing there, where we presented different solutions, what the potential costs and impacts of those are, and made decisions collectively through multiple study sessions with the council and Planning Commission. And that's the kind of process we would look forward to here. So we're not wedded to a particular approach absent that kind of dialogue and discussion.
And the last question on childcare is that you have things subsidies requested, no subsidy requested for childcare. Was that for the children, or what were you referring to? And would your school be 100% paid for?
Yes, so Molly Neighbors here, and she's our Senior Project Manager. They'll be working on this project and has led the work with the Santa Clara County Office of Education. So Molly, I'll let you take that question. Okay, we might be having trouble getting Molly audio. Nevada is our Director of Housing Development and has also been very involved in this aspect of the project. So Nevada, would you like to take that question?
As I heard the question, it was asking whether or not the cost to operate or to construct the childcare, that we would be bringing that source with the County Office of Education? Is that, is that your question, sir?
No, the question is, for the children, would their tuition be subsidized? Subsidized or paraded or?
Yes, so in connection with the way the county operates their program, they have spaces identified for families earning at different areas along the income spectrum. So we do have the superintendent from the Office of Education with us. I believe she's making public comment and can speak to more specifics about how, how they serve families throughout the, throughout the region.
So it's only for a few slots? It's not for, how many children were you planning to be able to?
There are 60, 60 seats at this proposed facility.
And is it from two-year-olds to five-year-olds?
It's zero to six.
Okay, six weeks?
Six months, oh, six years, sorry, zero to six years.
I thought you had to be at least six weeks old. And so of those 60 slots, how many would be fully subsidized?
I think that's a program that we would leave to the County Office of Education to determine based on the needs of the, the area.
But it is intended to be mixed income, so to provide some subsidized and unsubsidized. And that would be the program the County Office of Education is bringing. They're also bringing with them capital dollars to build out the space. So there's no cost to the project of either providing a subsidized slot or the construction of the childcare facility.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from the county superintendent on more details about the childcare?
If she's available, yeah, so I would appreciate that.
You're in the attendee box, so let me switch over and see if I can get her.
Thank you.
Here we go. Might need your help. Yes, Dr. Dewan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you. So yes, the, the intent of this design would be to be able to offer mixed income. So it would be a combination of subsidized seats, although all the seats could be subsidized if if that was the need of the community. But our goal is to offer a mixed income opportunity. And so there would be sliding scale available if the need of the community and the interest of the community is there. We would be able to serve individuals who, who live in the development, who live nearby the development or are employed nearby the development.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your questions, Councilman McAllister?
Yeah, would the county pay all the tuition, no subsidized fees?
Yes, the tuition, the subsidized fees would come from a combination of state and federal dollars for those seats.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's see, we'll move on to other questions from council members, Councilmember Hicks.
So my first question is for Jan Lindenthal. It's just something I heard you say, but I didn't quite catch. You said that, I think this was talking about the funding or mix of families that you would serve. You said that, that the principal you were using could be expanded to other districts in Mountain View. Do you remember what you said at the end of your presentation? And maybe you could fill in details on what that meant.
Yes, I was referring to the partnership that we've struck so far is with the Mountain View Wisman School District. But we recognize there are other districts operating in Mountain View and, and so we could expand that program to serve homeless families with children in the other school districts, including the high school district.
Okay, and then you, you had, so my, my general question is how you've planned this project to be a good neighbor to, you know, the lab, Pioneer Park and so forth. You answered that a little, but if you want to go into more detail, you can. My last question is about the, the parking garage. I've heard some comments on the, the open ground floor of that. And I'm wondering if you imagine, if there was any flexibility for partially closing it off or program, making sure it had programming. There was, I heard some concerns about vacancy at all hours.
Okay, I'll let Felix kick off this answer and then also invite John to weigh in.
Yeah, I think, so currently it's an open parking area. So people can walk on and off that parking lot, you know, without, without a lot of hindrance. And I think the, the vision is to enable that function in the future so that it can continue to serve that, that function for potential special events. We can have food trucks potentially because it has a 17-foot ceiling. You can have pop-up tents, you can have, you know, a smaller version of the farmer's market held inside it. And people can still walk on and off the sidewalk into that, that area. And I think we're certainly open to creating potentially either removable barriers or temporary barriers if that gives residents a better peace of mind in terms of separating that, you know, parking from, from the sidewalk. And I think that's something we want to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, have that discussion. You might also see there's a little kiosk there in that corner that we can see either the city or the chamber potentially operating as a, as a kind of a info guiding area. And from that kiosk in either direction on California and Bryant, we could be putting some type of separation, you know, either like a small physical separation just to delineate the space or use some other methods to do that, like, like changing sidewalk color or something like that. So John, other thoughts you have?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that covers most of it Felix. It is just this great opportunity to have a space that, you know, basically just by not parking cars on it, you have this great space over the weekends where you, that is lit and it is covered, that you can have year-round activities. And even the kind of, you know, there might be even storage for the kind of paraphernalia of weekend of screens and tables and all that sort of stuff in the back of the garage where you don't really have that anywhere else. So, you know, it's, it is, it's flexible, it's kind of a flexible idea too. And, but it looks like it's on the track to be really successful, we hope.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Madacek?
Thank you. I want to disclose that I did meet with Mid Penn. I have a couple of questions. You talked about the partnership with the Mountain View Wisman School District. And in the staff report, it says 16 units for persons with intellectual development disabilities or for homeless families referred from the Mountain View Wisman School District. So how would that work? Would the families from the school district still be subject to all of the same requirements as anyone else? In terms of income and any other requirements there might be?
Yes, they would still have to go through our tenant screening process. The opportunity that we see is that the district through the program that they're already implementing with homeless families in the district would be making the referrals.
Yeah, and the two populations are separate, so there's eight homes for each population. On the, the school district side, we're modeling this after another program that we've implemented in San Mateo with an organization called Hip Housing. And that organization or that agency would have the ability to do a direct referral, but it would still have to go through our screening process and income qualify. Potentially the local live-work preference would also layer on top of that. So all of, you know, so it gives those families that are being referred from the district an opportunity to get in without going through the general waitlist and application process.
So they would be, it's a separate list for eight units?
It's eight preferences or preferences on eight units, yes.
Okay. But they're not guaranteed because they would have to meet the other qualifications, right?
Yes, which are income only.
Okay. Well, that's what I was asking, is there anything other than income? So the answer is no.
Yeah, there is nothing else other than income.
And if there was some, if there was a, if the school district made a referral and there was some, that, that family didn't meet the income requirement, the district could then make another referral. So the intention would be to continue to take referrals from the district until we filled all eight units. And then if any unit turns over, we would get more referrals.
Okay. And let's see, I noticed that you had a lot of studios in the plan. I think it was 40. What was the thinking behind that? Felix?
Yeah, so we wanted to balance between serving families, which we heard was an important priority. And so we have the same 25% a quarter three bedrooms and a quarter two bedrooms. So half the development is for families. But we also have a mix of studios and ones. And that's really for the workforce, for seniors, for single households that might be working near the downtown. It's just that we, we wanted to create a, a good mix of both unit types and income bands that, that can capture kind of the whole of Mountain View community.
And especially in a downtown location like this, we just see such an opportunity to create affordable units for those young employees that are working in the downtown businesses that can't afford to be able to live on their own, maybe living with their parents or commuting in from out of town. So we, we really like that combination of studio apartments in this kind of downtown setting for that workforce.
Okay, sorry, I did have another question about the school districts. If you expanded it to other school districts, would you then say it's 16 units? If you expanded it one more, or are they both being prioritized for eight units?
I think we would be totally open to that, to expanding that. I mean, to be honest, it's so often when we're building a, a community that has homeless units where we are required to use a referral process where we don't, we're not able to necessarily serve homeless folks from that community. And there's a huge need for that. For families that are at risk of homelessness, are living in their cars, you know, are couch surfing, are very vulnerable. And so the opportunity to be able to directly refer those families into affordable housing to us is like the holy grail of an opportunity here. And so if, if it was the council's wish that we expand that by expanding the districts that we're working with, we would be all over that.
Yeah, and, and based on our conversations with Dr. Rudolph, the, these preference units would be in all the different income bands. Because the families could be making, they, they could be dual wage earners who are, you know, making minimum wage. There is a variety. So I think if we were selected, we would be working with the school districts and with the city and with the community to determine what that need is and the number that is assigned for that preference is flexible.
Okay, but it would have to be just up to 80% AMI, right?
Up to 80, yes.
Okay. How did that one even come about with the Mountain View Wisman School District?
Well, we had many conversations with council members and one of the things that was highlighted was Dr. Rudolph's testimony at council about the families that are living in their vehicles. And that made an impression on a lot of the council members that we spoke with. It was a, it was a huge challenge when we heard it, we were like, ah, that's, that's kind of hard to do. And so we, we really thought about it and we went through our portfolio and we found this example of how we have this direct referral with an agency, this arrangement that's working, that, you know, that we have a legal opinion on how it works and why, why it works. And we figured that there's a lot of parallels between how that program works. And so we had a conversation with Dr. Rudolph. We made, you know, we made an assessment that the programs that they're already running for homeless families, where they're giving special attention to the kids and trying to assist the families could, you know, be a good parallel to the program that we already have. And, and that's how this came about.
So do you have to get special permission or some sort of, you know, formal process you go through to do a program like this?
We would have.
With your lenders?
We would have an agreement with the agency, but it would also be in the regulatory agreement from the city. So in, in the case of the Sweeney Lane project in Daly City, the county wrote into their regulatory agreement some language around this program. And here, the city, if this is a program that you want to support, can write this into the regulatory agreement. And then I think we're on our way.
Okay, great, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mid Penn? Great, thank you very much.
How much?
We will move on to our last development team, which is Palo Alto Housing slash Related. And the lead is someone we know pretty well, Mr. Randy Suda. And let's see if you are in the box.
Mayor, he should be coming up, I think, under a different listing, but he should be here just momentarily.
Yes, I see him, Bill Witt.
For some reason, we have apparently three Bill Witties, but I obviously am not Bill Witt. Hold on one sec, I will share my screen. Lisa, it's saying host disabled screen share.
Sorry, one moment with that confusion, I just didn't quite get there, just one moment.
Hey Randy, just for your sake, that's what the Tetons look like without the clouds.
John, I took notice of, of that, yes, as soon as the meeting started.
There you go, Mr. Suda, you should be all set.
All right, thank you. Okay, can you see the screen? All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Randy Suda, I'm the CEO of Palo Alto Housing and tonight representing the Related Palo Alto Housing Partnership. What I want to do today in the four minutes is just quickly highlight some of the key points that we hope you'll consider as you deliberate on, on Lot 12. You know, one of the things we have tried to do is in this, in this, as we crafted the proposal, is we worked long, worked long and hard in understanding the community's desires and issues. You know, we, we believe this partnership leverages the best of both organizations. It leverages the experience and, experience and expertise of Related along with Palo Alto Housing, 50 years as a local, community-based affordable housing nonprofit. And obviously, as you know, it, I bring my 20 years of what I'll call hyper-local experience in serving and living in Mountain View. We, we obviously have met all the requirements of the RFP, but I think what we want to really show you today is how we've done that in a way that's sensitive to the community and understanding of the city's key issues. And you will see that in our emphasis on quality architecture, on, on the urban design aspects of the proposal and the place-making that we've, we've incorporated into the project in an effort to carefully weave the project into the downtown community. So moving on to design, our, our building, we believe gracefully integrates with the neighborhood. It steps down from five stories to, to blend east to west across the site to integrate with the homes next door. We have pushed the rear townhouse building away from the rear property line, allowing for us to incorporate a mid-block crossing or a garden use, potentially a community garden that would be open to the public. And then the design program also emphasizes the fact that we have wrapped all the parking with active uses. We have provided the parking onsite in at-grade and below-grade, all of which is screened from public view. We've also provided an alternate off-site parking option that's included in our proposal. And in our proposal, there is a sketch showing how the ground floor parking could be converted to roughly 11 or 12 additional parking units, should the parking demand reduce in the future. You know, we, we've taken a lot of pride in reaching out to community, community organizations such as CSMA, the CSA and Ada's Cafe in looking for great local nonprofits to take space in the building in our community-serving commercial space. This is leveraging the, our philosophy of utilizing this site both the indoor spaces and the outdoor spaces to meet the needs of both our residents and the community. And if it is the desire of council, we would of course be willing to look at including daycare into our proposal also. We've included three scenarios in our proposal. It's really wanted to demonstrate our flexibility and our capability to deliver on any one of these scenarios based on council's determination of the needs of the community. All of these, we, we have the flexibility to do all, any of these scenarios. I want to point out that scenarios one and three fully meet and accommodate the city's live-work preference. And, and we provided a detailed financing plan that really builds upon Related's expertise. And in, in, in financial strength, we've provided a detailed analysis, realistic costs based on estimates provided by two contractors and, and worked hard to minimize the requested city subsidy of $4.3 million for scenarios one and two. So with that, we are achieving a leverage of almost 25 times the city's investment through our use of outside funding. So what we'd like to leave with you today is that we know this proposal is a starting point. It's the starting, not the ending. We have, Mountain View has high expectations and we're standing ready to work with council and with all of, and, and the community to really mold and shape this into a project that will make Mountain View proud, thank you.
Thank you. Any council member questions for the Palo Alto Related Health Development Team? Councilmember McAllister?
Randy, I got to, I met with the applicant via Zoom. So I've already had a chat with them, so. Randy, so I've asked everybody the same question, so I might as well be fair with you. You know, this is somebody's home. They're going to live there. I'm trying to visualize it for them and not try to add all these other things to it. So physically and in the space, how are you going to make this a collaborative community for the people that live there and not have to feel that they're sharing their property with people coming and going all the time?
I'll respond to that in a couple ways. You know, first, on the physical design, we have incorporated a full half-acre of open space into this project. Some of that is space that is shared with the community as a whole. And a full quarter acre is dedicated to resident-serving space. That's the common open space. That's between the two buildings. That space that currently, as, you know, again, as an initial concept, shows the incorporation of seating areas, two barbecue areas, communal dining facilities and things like that. That's one of those key things that would evolve and be modified based on the council study session and input through the DRC process. We've also, I think, in our experience, part of building community is also the services that we provide. Palo Alto Housing Resident Services will be the, will provide the resident services on this site. We've been doing that for fifty years. And with our Resident Services program, we emphasize community building and building of social ties throughout, through the residents through a variety of programs. We provide after-school academic support and study hall. We provide financial literacy training. We provide community-building events. And I think importantly, one example of that, where we build ties between our residents and the community as a whole, is the Family Leadership Conference that we host every year in partnership with the Palo Alto Unified School District. It's a conference that we host with the school district designed to enable those of lower incomes or families where English is a second language or special needs children. We provide them a specialized training and counseling on how to best leverage the services that are available to them through the school district and other outside agencies. So that's an indication. These are just some examples of the types of programs that we run in properties that are served by our Resident Services Division. So we see this as a combination of both the physical design and also the residential services that we provide.
Thank you. Under Scenario One, you're saying that, of your scenarios, that is the one that gives the city the most local preference?
Correct. Scenario One is the scenario that does not incorporate Measure A funding. So that would make it eligible for, make all the units eligible for the city's live-work preference.
Okay. And in the bedrooms, we already, I think, council member Mattichak will ask about the bedrooms. The number of three bedrooms, right, is fifty percent or twenty-five percent of the total units?
Yes, twenty-five percent twos and twenty-five percent three bedrooms.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mattichak?
Thank you. I'll disclose that I also met with the Related Palo Alto Housing Team. But I have a few more questions. And one is, you heard the previous team talk about the program with the school districts. And I was wondering if you have any experience doing something like that? And if not, are you open to it?
We're certainly open to discussing that with Mountain View Wisman School District and the High School District. You know, I've talked about our partnership with Palo Alto Unified School District. I will ask Ann Silverberg from Related if she would like to comment on school partnerships also.
Yeah, no, I think that we're certainly open to any, can you hear me? Yeah. We're certainly open to any kind of partnership like that that provides housing to folks who are in Mountain View, who need the housing. And whether it's folks that are school district employees or school teachers or just members of the community because they work in the community or they live or live in their cars in the community. They all need housing. So we're absolutely open to working with the school district.
Councilmember, if I may, in a number of our projects, we have partnerships with local school districts, not just on the residential side, but in providing space for school district-run programs. Often, they have a need for space. We can provide the space, and in this case, a resident population that can benefit. So it's a little different spin on that, but we've done that a number of times.
Okay. I guess that was my only question. Thanks.
Councilmember Hicks?
So I was wondering, in terms of flexibility, whether the scenario that involves permanently supportive housing, whether you could substitute rapid rehousing, as I think that may serve the population in Mountain View, some of the people that we're trying to serve a little better, particularly at this location. So that's question one. And then just, I've been asking how the project is a good neighbor in this particular area, you know, near so many of our public amenities. So you answered that a little. But if you want to add detail to that, that's my second.
Sure, I'll answer the first, the second question first. In terms of, you know, we've really, one of our key values was, is really trying to integrate and stitch this project into the, into the community. We did that in several ways, by incorporating a public plaza at the corner of California and Bryant. We've done that through the mid-block crossing slash community garden space at the rear of the project that will be open to the community. And we're really trying to do that through through flexible use of those community organization spaces. You know, we see that as a way of bringing the Mountain View community into the building, into the project itself. And also just want to point out, we have some flex space that currently is identified in the project. This is space that is really intended to be used for a variety of purposes, such as classes. When our discussions with CSMA, they talked about having potentially art classes, using, utilizing it for art gallery, art display space. We can have small performances in there. So it's yet one more way we are trying to leverage this property, leverage our building to provide spaces that both benefit our residents but benefit the community as a whole. And I'll turn to Ann if you want to comment on the rapid rehousing.
Sure. Yes, we can accommodate rapid rehousing instead of the PSH model that works with the county with Measure A. And we're happy to do that. We, you know, we, this theme of flexibility, it's been talked about tonight, and we are flexible. We tried to demonstrate that with a variety of scenarios. We figured three was enough, so we didn't, we didn't model the rapid rehousing. But that certainly would work in this, in this location as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I had one. I was hoping you could explain the, is it ten million dollar pre-funding that could be used to back into your project or for parking? Is that basically, I guess, looking at it in a different way as another, as a subsidy from the city? Or is that in addition to satisfying the parking requirements by building the parking spaces onsite as well?
So we thought long and hard about, you know, again, taking the council's goal of trying to minimize the city investment. We took that goal very, very seriously. So we thought long and hard about how we can creatively, how we can creatively help the city subsidize the costs of the project and potentially the parking. So the approach that we've proposed is essentially a prepaid ground lease. So we would prepay a ground lease for the property of rough, just over ten million dollars for the term of the, term of the ground lease. Pay that upfront in a lump sum. That goes to the city, and the city could then turn around and reinvest that into the parking to help offset the costs, invest that in the project to help offset the cost of the parking. And that will work if the parking is onsite. And if it is, council opts for off-site parking solution, that money can then be put into the pot, along with potentially another developer. As we've pointed out in the proposal, we've talked to Spick Development and also, I also had a conversation with Marwood about potentially teaming up on a public lot on Lot Six. So if that were to be pursued, that ten million dollar prepaid ground lease could also be put into the off-site parking solution.
So is that some kind of financial or funding? What's the term? Strategy that helps you get the project? Like, why would, the other projects seem to just absorb that cost? Or they're asking for the, you know, city subsidy. But the pre-funding, is that just like a, some kind of financial, is there a financial benefit in doing it that way?
Well, I think there's, well, I think, again, it allows, it allows leverage. It allows us to leverage funding from other sources. We could have, the city could, we could request that the city increase the subsidy. We chose to provide this, this approach of leveraging outside funding sources. You know, and, you know, the prepaid concept is one that the city used for the Google.
Yes.
The Google Charleston East lease also, where that was a prepaid lease for the initial term also.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Palo Alto Housing Related? Councilmember McAllister?
This is actually for staff. We hadn't talked about leases. So did I read the lease was a dollar a year? Or was there more about the leases that you guys could tell me about?
Sure. So for, based on council's direction that this is not a revenue-generating project, there's an expectation that respondents would include, as part of the project financing, a low lease payment to the city. And so something like a dollar a year. Essentially, that's a way to subsidize and help make the project financially feasible. Related PH has taken a different approach with this ground lease, kind of lump sum payment upfront. So that is different than the other three teams that have looked at a dollar a year a ground lease payment to help pencil the project.
So I was looking at the cost of these projects. So if we required a conventional lease of whatever, how much would it add to the cost? How much are they saving by going a dollar? So I know Randy did a project on El Camino. It was, what, ninety million dollars, something like that, Randy? For the land, it was, it was a chunk of change. And so they lost the subsidy on that. So how much of a subsidy are they getting by us giving them the land per unit, could you say?
So I'll offer a general framework. And we also do have Libby Seifel on the call, and she could potentially add some additional color. But if you were to assume that for a 1.5-acre site, it's anywhere from, say, ten to fifteen million dollars an acre, or possibly more. And then you divide the cost of the land by the number of units. That sort of backs into the per-unit cost of the land, which is quite high, given, let's just round numbers, say it's ten million dollars per acre for 1.5-acre site. It's fifteen million dollars divided by a hundred and twenty units. So that gives you a sense of the amount of the land cost that is not in the project, which helps the project pencil. And then, Libby, if you have any additional thoughts to add, please feel free to do so.
Hello, council, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wayne's nodding. So we did speak with the Real Estate Division about market value of land. And we did get a range of ten million to fifteen million an acre. So to build on what Wayne just said, a ten million an acre, that would be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per unit.
Okay. So I just took twelve million divided by, so it's a hundred thousand dollars. And so on this chart, Wayne, that you made says residential cost per unit. We have one group is at seven hundred and forty-four thousand. Another group is five hundred and fifty thousand, another six hundred and thirty-four thousand, a hundred thousand. And so those are taken consideration, the hundred thousand dollar subsidy?
Yes. So in their pro forma, they factored in essentially the cost of the land or the lease payment, which is essentially not part of the project. And so their estimates in the pro forma has factored that in.
So Randy, I'm going to ask you an unfair question. The property on El Camino, what was your unit cost? Do you remember?
It, are you speaking of on Eagle Park?
No, the one, Taco Bell.
The one that we have, the one we're hoping to get going on next month. That one, as I recall, was around eight hundred also. I'd have to go look that up.
Eight hundred, okay. I'm just, that I know, so I was just using as a frame of reference for that. Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions for council members for PH? No? All right. Well, thank you very much. We will close this section. And are there any council questions for staff at this point? Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. And just following Councilmember Mattichak's lead, I also want to disclose that I've met with all of the applicants. And I'm also grateful for all of your questions. I think we got a lot of good detail. I have just a couple of questions for staff. And the first, I think, has been made pretty clear, but just to make sure I'm on the same page with everybody else. So even after we select a developer, we still retain a lot of discretion to explore some of the mixing and matching of ideas, right? So alternative funding sources or uses for the commercial space, you know, an alternative solution for parking, the bedroom mix, whether we want more, you know, family units. All of that, you know, can change regardless of which developer we select. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. The framework that we're, we've been articulating is minor variations under the framework that has been put forward by the Lot 12 RFP. And so the examples that you've mentioned and that the development teams have mentioned appear to fall within that framework. And then depending on if there are things that were much larger, then it would be a question of whether it's still a minor variation. But the examples mentioned here tonight that you've summarized here appear to fall within that framework.
Okay. Now, that's helpful. I guess, the way I'm thinking about it is, we don't, it's because it's hard to pick between four good proposals if we have some flexibility and discretion to change things. It's, I think, it helps us, it gives us an opportunity to mix and match some of the good ideas. And then I guess a question for Consuelo regarding some of the county issues. So, and I'm going to struggle to articulate So, and I'm going to struggle to articulate this. I I know the county has has done or worked in partnership with cities on outreach to, you know, I I don't know if this is just in the context of Measure A, but for for other county, you know, when there's a financial component in the county for affordable housing, there's been like a concerted outreach component within the city. And I'm wondering if you can speak to any efforts in Mountain View? And then, you know, if you've if you've done similar kind of outreach in other cities, how successful successful they've been in increasing the sort of the the housing of folks from within that city or within that community in in a given development?
Can you hear me now? Yeah, oh, great, perfect, thank you, thank you, council member. Yes, absolutely, we have our our outreach team that their sole focus is working with city partners to identify areas that homeless people reside in when we start leasing up a property. And I think the best example in your community of that partnership really is Eagle Park, where sixteen of the units are dedicated to the county's permanent supportive housing efforts. And fourteen of the households in those, fourteen of the sixteen units are, you know, the people in the units are people from Mountain View. And that's through our efforts to target specific outreach areas. You know, this is a combination of working with your safe parking partners, working with your local police department, your housing staff, and some of your planning staff to help us identify the areas in your community where homeless people congregate. So it really does become a partnership. And in the spirit of like flexibility, I did want to share with you that as you select a developer and, you know, there is an interest in having Measure A funding and allocating some of those units for supportive housing, it doesn't have to be all forty units dedicated to permanent supportive housing or forty units dedicated to rapid rehousing. It's a combination and we're happy to work with staff and the council to come up with that right balance of mix. I also wanted to mention that we have partnerships with other county departments to leverage their resources and ours to partner together. We have three programs currently for families with children in their in their families and are connected to your school districts. So we would be happy to explore a possible partnership. It all is connected to our coordinated entry system, so the families do have to be in our our program or they have to be enrolled. And to give you a sense of the numbers, currently we have five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven clients in what we refer to as the community queue. And of those, two hundred and seventy-one have an affiliation with the city of Mountain View. And so when you think about Eagle Park, where fourteen out of sixteen units are for, and we ended up housing fourteen Mountain View households, I think that shows what we're capable of providing the city of Mountain View in the way of partnership.
Thank you, and so, and just to make sure I understand fully and that the sixteen units were, there was no local preference. But with the partnership, we were able to house Mountain View to 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 provide, you know, I I don't want to say local preference because it sounds like it doesn't, but house fourteen of the sixteen despite the lack of a specific local preference policy. Is that, is that fair?
That's fair, it's unfortunately, we aren't able to guarantee, similar to the proposal offered to you by Mid Penn and the preference that is given to a Mountain View school or school district. We can't guarantee that, but we do everything possible within the limitations of our program to outreach, target that outreach when the units are being leased up, and successfully try to place as many people in those units that are from Mountain View.
Great, thank you very much, that's all.
Councilmember Maticek?
Thanks, you know, I actually think other folks raised their hands before me if they wanted to go ahead.
They come up on the list as you raise them, so you're next, Jen Q.
Oh, okay, just a couple of questions. You know, on the Eden proposal for the number of rapid rehousing units, I thought it was twenty-six, not forty. So when they, when everyone was talking and folks said forty, I thought, why did I put twenty-six in my notes? And on the staff report, on page fifteen, it says twenty-six.
I'm double checking on my screen, but I'm wondering also if it's possible for Andrea Osgood to respond directly.
I don't see her on her name. Is there someone from the Eden team who can respond?
Actually, I see her on mine with her hand up.
Oh, great.
Toward the very top, at least on my list.
I see her, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you go, yes.
All right, yes, so for the, we had two different scenarios, but for our preferred scenario, I should have clarified, it's twenty-six. Correct, because our preferred scenario is a hybrid, which combines a four percent project and a nine percent project. Technicalities, but essentially we're really focusing on that four percent side of the project as being our Measure A project. And so a third of that project needs to be rapid rehousing, so.
Okay, thank you. And then I want to make sure I remember the what we decided in terms of the parking for the Marwood project on Evelyn. And as I recall, we were not going to require them to do a joint garage with the built, the new building next to them and that they were going to build parking elsewhere. Is that correct?
I'll offer just my my understanding of it, but perhaps I'll ask RT Shavastava to 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 comment. But I believe your summary is correct. They they're exploring the ability to pay an annual fee and to explore using that amount for a facility, a Lot Six. And I see RT on here and I'll I'll hand it over to her.
I'm going to have to go back and look at the exact conditions of approval for the project. But yes, the council was open to having them explore. And I know they had brought a couple of options during the council goals discussion. And we are to fold that into the downtown strategy. But if I'm not mistaken, the original project had proposed parking in, you know, underground and connected to the Hope Street project. So this would be an amendment to the project that the council was open to exploring.
Okay, and what is the timeline for taking a look at parking downtown to assess whether or not another parking structure, taking the units needed that they need with potentially the hundred and sixty from here with any other we might want to add to it?
We had hoped to bring this to the council this year. But we're trying to fast track a couple of projects, one of which is the small business strategy. And so the downtown parking strategy, since the same team is working on it, will probably be a little bit delayed. And and we believe it's going to come in the beginning of next year. But we are, we are continuing to work on it and we do have a consultant, a parking consultant who's helping us.
Okay. Okay, thanks. That's, those are all the questions I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor?
Great, thank you so much. My questions are for Consuelo, if she's still on. I had a question about the AMI percentages. So one of the things I know for the Measure A funding would be, folks that would qualify would be thirty percent AMI and below. And I know that for one person, that'd be about thirty-three thousand dollars. And then I think for a family of four, that'd be about forty-seven thousand dollars. In the populations that you've been working with, and it sounds like you have some recent experience in Mountain View, can you maybe share some of the professions that folks within the AMI range have for us so that we can kind of better understand the population?
Yes, absolutely, great question. You know, one of the programmatically, what we've heard from our partnership on the Safe Parking Program and some of the lower income households in your community is that they are, you know, underserved in various in various ways in that they might be undocumented. And so qualifying for a unit that has a project-based voucher in some instances might disqualify them from being placed into housing. So it's not just the AMI level that that proves a challenge for them, but really it's their residential status, which is one of the reasons why I think having a combination of rapid rehousing and PSH would address the ELI population in your community the most. You know, and this is anecdotally from from our program managers, what I've heard in terms of how, you know, we had, we started off with a partnership in Mountain View with twenty case management slots. So this was the county, the city paying for twenty units or twenty case management spots. And through our work, we would find them a permanent housing location. And we indirectly served over forty-five households. But in terms of permanently housing them, the challenge became their residential status.
Great, thank you. And then part of my question was also the the income level. So for the folks that were able to be housed and and weren't facing those same challenges of kind of residency status, what were the, were those, were certain industries, was it service industry for those folks who are in that ELI population?
Yes, it's primarily, it's primarily single income households. And they, you know, once they graduate from a program, whether that's, you know, typically it's the rapid rehousing that has the opportunity to increase their income through employment initiatives that we partner with. When they graduate, they come out of the program at that same thirty percent AMI level. So their income is that low that they can't necessarily achieve a higher income overall to step into the next income bracket.
I see, okay.
And and we also have, you know, there's, when we think about the disabled population that we serve, in some cases, it's an adult with a disabled child. And so they're unable to work because they have to take care of that child. And so realistically, in the long term, their ability to increase their income is is not, you know, it's not fair to compare that family with somebody who might, I believe Eden was describing, you know, the needs of the rapid rehousing families. In some cases, their acuity level is lower, but they still have a member of their household that has special needs.
And then just last question for you, Consuelo, thanks so much for staying on the line with us so late. I know that in Santa Clara County in particular, the the kind of quote unquote face of homelessness has changed significantly than perhaps what might be traditionally thought of. Can you maybe share a little bit about what you've seen? You know, maybe even in reflection of the of the recent pandemic in terms of folks who who would be falling into the quote unquote homeless category?
Yes, that's a great question. Our most recent data shows that for every single household that we assist or that that we provide either case management or housing placement, three new families or individuals enter our system. And the majority of those that are entering are first time, you know, it's the first time they become homeless. So we are struggling with keeping up with the pace of the number of people that are at risk of homelessness and becoming homeless. And the pandemic has accelerated that where, and, you know, we've been working with your staff and others across the county to think about homelessness prevention. And that is really the most recent gap that we're seeing because of the pandemic is families that were already on the brink of homelessness are now becoming homeless because of the current health crisis.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And then I I did want to disclose that I met with, virtually met with Mid Penn and Palo Alto Housing slash Related.
Councilmember Hicks?
So now I want to follow up on the Vice Mayor's question. Could you give me, because I hadn't heard that before, could you give me a little more detail on how the combination of rapid rehousing and permanently supportive housing would best? Basically, I want the, whatever program would best house the the growing number of people who are experiencing housing problems in, you know, in our city because they are growing so much. I didn't quite understand why a combination of rapidly rapid rehousing and permanently supportive housing would you thought might best do that? Is it, does it involve income and the the fact that maybe, maybe you could flesh out a little more what each of those are? I don't know if it's the inability of some people to raise their income or whether it's immigration status and how those two categories, or maybe it's something else, but how those two category rapid rehousing and permanently supportive housing, you know, how they differ and how they serve different populations?
Absolutely, great question, Councilmember. You know, we at the county, we manage a supportive housing system that carries a variety of housing approaches. So to give you some context of the number of people that are currently enrolled in our programs, we have eighty-four households that have an affiliation with the city of Mountain View that need permanent supportive housing. And then we have twenty-five households that need rapid rehousing. These are only people that are currently enrolled in a program with the county. And so ideally, we would be looking to support housing developers and housing development projects that can address that need in your community, that are people that are in our programs that we can quickly help. And if you decide to have all of the units be one or the other, you're kind of limiting your ability to respond to that need. And the way that our NOFA works is you could have of the forty units, thirty be PSH and the balance be rapid rehousing or the reverse. So in both instances, we provide Measure A funding. In both instances, we pay for the supportive services for those households. And I think that combination and flexibility will allow you to address the eighty-four households that need housing in the permanent supportive housing category and twenty-five that need rapid rehousing. And again, these are just the people that we're aware of that are enrolled in a housing program in the county's system.
So are you just saying a combination would work best because then it would allow us to access from both of those lists? Is that?
Yes, you know, one of, one of the, one of the comments that was made by one of the development teams is this idea that Mountain View essentially would be able to address your local housing need for your homeless population by building rapid rehousing or, you know, having the units be rapid rehousing. And I want to make sure that you're aware, because our system is so complex, that you would have the ability to serve your homeless population with a combination of of both interventions, permanent supportive and rapid rehousing in one building.
Okay, now let me ask you this, because when I met with some of our RV residents, they told me that they were, and this was, this was people with some disabilities or with children in our schools. They said they feared that they were kind of, that they would not score well on the rating system that would get them into permanently supportive housing and that they would be kind of, they would not be able to access that. Is because they, they said there was a rating system with points that they did not. Is because they, they said there was a rating system with points, they did not have enough problems to get enough points. Do you think that's an accurate assessment on their part?
Unfortunately not. I think this is where the terminology confuses people and we are changing the way that we talk about our housing interventions because the Rapid Rehousing is a permanent program. The way that, the way that the Measure A Rapid Rehousing units, the families that are placed in that unit can stay there as long as they income qualify. So I think there is this thought that if I, my acuity level, meaning my mental health, the combination of my disability and the period of time I've been homeless, all of those factors or variables determine my acuity level and whether I score at the permanent supportive housing intervention or Rapid Rehousing intervention. And a lot of people, primarily our clients, um don't understand that way of thinking. So I think it's best to share with them that, you know, if they are placed in a Rapid Rehousing program, it leads to permanent housing. And it's not based on, it's based on what program they're enrolled in and not the type of housing, um which I think is confusing.
Yeah, what they were telling me is they thought they could not score high enough to enter into the system. They thought other people had a longer list of problems that would give them a higher score. Um but I don't know whether we can pursue that now. Um I think that's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, um I'm gonna open this up to public comment. And if you are in our attendee box on Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, please hit the raise hand button at the bottom of the box. Or if you're on the phone, please hit star nine. And I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I have nine. And City Clerk, do you have other public comment?
I have uh one email to read into the record.
Okay, great. So we have ten. Um I'm gonna give everyone. Let's see, let's go with two minutes. And we'll start with um Ms. Consuelo. I I'm assuming you're not in the queue for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't sure if I was gonna have the opportunity to answer questions. And I just wanted you all to know that I was here and happy to answer any questions you might have and very much looking forward to partnering with your staff um and the council.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you for staying with us so late. Um so I'll go next to Mary Ann Dewan. If you could, there you go.
Um good evening, Mayor Abicoga, Vice Mayor Kamai, and council members. I'm Dr. Mary Ann Dewan, County Superintendent of Schools. At the Santa Clara County Office of Education, we believe in making sound investments in our primary stakeholders, the children and families we serve. We do this in many ways, from initiatives that provide professional learning to educators to also providing services to students in direct and indirect support services and through research and advocacy. In the area of early learning, we have been proactive in leading and managing a master plan with the goal of increasing access to inclusive, high-quality, early care and education for our county's youngest and most vulnerable children. The research shows that children, especially those from low-income families who receive high-quality early care and education are more likely to start kindergarten ready to learn and with the social, emotional development needed to interact effectively with their classmates. Low-income children who receive high-quality preschool are more likely to meet academic milestones such as reading at grade level by the third grade and graduating from high school. The stakes could not be higher. In two thousand and seventeen, our office commissioned a study, the Early Learning Master Plan around facilities. We learned that there were twenty-eight thousand children under the age of three that did not have access to childcare. In Mountain View, that represented six hundred and fifty-three children. We also learned that for many childcare providers in the county, the single greatest obstacle to them expanding was the lack of facility space. Our findings make it clear that if we're going to ensure all children have access to childcare, we need to think bigger. We appreciate local officials who are willing to prioritize early care and education in their development plans. And we need to continue to explore and support unique partnerships such as the ones discussed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Mary Kwan.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So first of all, I'd like to appreciate the city mayor, um the council members taking this matter seriously and give um the citizen residents here a venue to share our voice. So first of all, as a homeowner in Mountain View, I was very attracted by the vibrant and safe downtown. So I, when I visit here for housing search, I can immediately picture myself eating at a downtown restaurant, commute to my work in Silicon Valley and see my kids running around in the downtown area. So I am very concerned about having Measure A residents um mixed with a typical Silicon Valley residents here. So if I were a young tech workers here, I would not consider renting a place next to a Measure A residence. And I would say that by having a project like this, it's going to transfer, transform our downtown into ghost town rapidly. I'm very concerned. I understand that developers are looking to funding to maintain business under a country environment, but after you leave, right? So think about the housing price and think about the population here. I am uh really concerned that the business on Castro Street is going to be impacted by the homeless population. Um and uh so I just want to let you know that if this is the case, I would not feel comfortable to tell my kids going to library. And uh if I am going to bring my clients for downtown dining, I will not bring them to Mountain View. So with that, I just want to urge uh the city council to reconsider um the leverage of Measure A funding. I just don't want to see a nice downtown being a ghost town. That's what I have.
Thank you. We'll go next to Ray Bramson. And we should be able to.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Ray Bramson. I'm the Chief Impact Officer with Destination Home, a public-private partnership that's focused on creating deeply affordable housing and providing support and services to homeless individuals throughout Santa Clara County. Um I want to hearken back to Councilmember McCallister's comments from the beginning of this meeting. And I I really do think that the city council of Mountain View should be commended for the work that you've done over the past few years, um at both the staff level and at the council level um for both providing support and services to the homeless population, but also creating housing opportunities and deeply affordable housing opportunities. And I think Lot Twelve that you're listening to, uh that you're speaking of tonight is another amazing, amazing opportunity to create deeply affordable housing that's desperately needed um for Santa Clara County residents, um while also leveraging Measure A funding. We've worked on projects in six cities from Cupertino to Gilroy using Measure A funding to build high-quality developments in a variety of different neighborhoods, both urban and suburban settings. Um I think for our part, at Destination Home, if the council were to select a Measure A, uh a development that was proposing a Measure A funding source and developing a Measure A project, Destination Home is completely committed to working closely with uh with the City of Mountain View and seeing if we can leverage outside external private funding sources or rather reduce the subsidy. So once again, we want to thank you uh again for your consideration of this important project and the work and time you've put into this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to Bruce England next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I had to unmute myself again. That seems to be working just fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive, and um speaking again for uh MVCSP Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning. We didn't submit a comment letter on this, but I'll just make a few points um quickly. Redeveloping Lot Twelve provides a great opportunity to put housing close to services, transportation, and amenities and to address the enormous need for more affordable and supportive housing in our community. And the city clearly has multiple strong proposals to consider. As Destination Home has pointed out, it's great to see multiple highly-rated proposals submitted that would leverage Measure A funding. And this will enable development maximizing the number of extremely low-income and supportive housing units and achieve the deepest level of overall affordability. MVCSP has a Safe Parking Community Task Force, and we've identified Lot Twelve for potential safe parking when possible during the development process. And we urge you to consider this option as part of the project scope. That's it for me.
Thank you. We'll go to Michael Garcia. And if you can, and there we go.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor Abicoga, Vice Mayor Kamai, and council members. Uh first off, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment this evening. Uh my name is Michael Garcia. I'm the Director of Childcare Planning and Support for the Santa Clara County Office of Education. And in this capacity, I also support the Local Early Education Planning Council. Uh the Planning Council is a county-level collaborative with representatives from the early care and education field, including parents, childcare providers, businesses, and government. We are overseen by uh both the County Board of Supervisors and Board of Education. Um our primary responsibilities include assessing global childcare needs, setting priorities for the use of state and federal dollars for subsidized childcare programs, and advocating for public policy decisions regarding early education. Uh given the presentations and proposals heard this evening, um I'm here to speak in favor of the development teams that propose to build in childcare for the ground-level non-residential use. I believe affordable housing coupled with co-located childcare is one of the best ways in which we can work towards a highly beneficial solution that addresses two of the greatest barriers affecting low-income children and families in our county, uh the lack of affordable housing and the short supply of affordable childcare. If selected, either development team uh proposes to build childcare facilities uh that is to be operated by a state subsidized childcare provider, I believe that's an important detail that should be taken into consideration. Uh according to the latest data from my office, uh less than one percent of Mountain View's children under the age of three qualify for state subsidized childcare. Uh while higher, that also applies to forty-four percent of children of preschool age. Uh and just for reference, uh family of four for subsidized childcare um qualifies for subsidized childcare if their family income does not exceed eighty thousand. In Mountain View alone, there's uh seven hundred and twenty-nine children under the age of six who meet that income criteria and who may be forced to go without care simply because their parents cannot afford it. Uh in closing, uh you could address some of uh that need this evening by selecting the development team that proposes to build affordable housing that includes childcare. And in doing so, you'd be investing in a family-friendly development that provides an essential service as needed now and will certainly be needed in the future. Uh thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go now to again Davidoff. And if you can unmute yourself, please.
All right, good uh, good evening, everyone. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um you have a bunch of great proposals and, um and so I'm not gonna speak on the validity or why each one uh is deserving. Obviously, we have a need within our community to make sure that there's enough affordable housing, and I applaud the city council for working on this. I do want to highlight uh one thing, though. Um we have fourteen new homeless students in our district um as of today, which brings our total up to a hundred and seventy-five, which is up from February from one hundred and sixty-one. And there are a lot of our homeless families are now saying that they do not want us to know uh that they moved out of Mountain View or where they are currently living. And so I think a plan that encompasses a a preference or approach to address the homeless students that are both shared from Mountain View Wisman and Mountain View Los Altos as well as uh early childhood, early childcare uh for for families is is a viable option. And it's not to knock any of the other options that are out there, but it's just simply to say that I believe that this one not only addresses the needs of our city, uh but also addresses the needs of our most vulnerable citizens, which are our students. So I would strongly commend, just as sim- uh similar to the letter that I placed uh in their packet uh and that I sent earlier today, um that you rec- that you support uh the Mid Penn Project um with with a strong preference for uh homeless students in Mountain View Wisman as well as Mountain View Los Altos, as well as the early childcare uh childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Chen Wang. Please unmute yourself. Yes.
Oh, thanks for the uh opportunity to let me speak. I think it's a good uh, great idea to build uh for the house for people to provide a public service to Mountain View residents, particularly for those people like teachers and firefighters. Uh but I do have very big concern uh for their Measure A funding to support this project. First, I learned that if we use Measure A, the county will uh decide. Uh I think that the forty units will be decided by the county who can resident, who can can be resident there. So that actually makes this, that that's uh, we have much less resource to actually serve this affordable house to other uh 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 people who actually pu- provide the public service to Mountain View residents. So for the best interest of Mountain View residents, I think we can, we should not accept Measure A. We should fully control and make sure it's of, if the Mountain View resident has higher priority, the teachers, firefighters have high priority to be the resident of new uh affordable house. That's one point. The second point, I think that um this issue is not really very notified or become awareness of all the Mountain View residents. Based on their public comments here, the only very few uh comments are Mountain View residents. So I I'm not sure if we still have enough time to actually uh broadcast this to to more people who live in Mountain View and get more inputs from Mountain View residents. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going now to Alex Brown.
Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll wait for the timer to reset.
City Clerk, could we reset the timer? There we go. Thank you.
That's gone. Uh so yeah, I just wanted to open uh with an acknowledgement to the mayor and Councilmember McAllister that uh, you know, I give you, let's go with Guff, uh often enough for various projects and things. But I want to commend you for taking the time to do something good that is, you know, public housing that especially supports people who are experiencing homelessness right now. I think this is a dire need for a lot of people. One thing that I can't let stand is just, there's miraculous alchemy that happens when you provide housing to people in a city, that they become residents of that city because they reside there definitionally. That is how housing works. And so having a preference for people who formerly lived in Mountain View or people who are residing in Mountain View in unstable housing situations is nice. But as soon as they have established housing in Mountain View in permanent supportive housing, in uh like affordable housing products, in any sort of residence, they are citizens, they're our neighbors, they're our people. And the idea that we have to find people who serve the more uh like the more deserving residents of Mountain View as a public service in order to justify their not being on the streets is just morally reprehensible. I don't, I don't, I don't like that. Uh these are people, these are, these are our neighbors. As soon as we have housing for them and they live there, they are part of the city. They are residents. They're, they're, they're our community, and I think we should do everything we can to foster that and to support them and to welcome them and not try to means test and restrict and scrutinize every single person who needs help. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going now to Louise Katz. You could.
There you go.
Yes, thank you, uh mayor and council. Uh on behalf of Livable Mountain View, we've submitted uh a letter. And I just wanted to um say that we uh support the excellent design of the Related Palo Alto Housing Scenario One, which requires no Measure A funds and fully serves local needs. In the alternative, the Mid Penn Project, which also uses no Measure A funds uh as the others do, would also accomplish the same goals. Why should we support that? First of all, as was explained, the Palo Alto Housing Scenario One has the same cost as their Scenario Two, which has Measure A funds. It means that we will not save any money by using Measure A funds. And as much discussion tonight has been about the difficulty of maneuvering uh within the controls that And as much discussion tonight has been about the difficulty of maneuvering within the controls that come with Measure A. Just like tonight's earlier discussion about the new development, Mountain View residents have come to the City Council meetings, often by the hundreds, over and over, asking for low-income affordable housing for struggling residents, displaced residents, and those who work here and have brutal commutes because of affordability. I have not heard anyone asking for housing for those on a county-wide list whose qualifications were the highest level of need based on problems and conditions that rendered them the most difficult to house and employ. Measure A funds criteria could very easily exclude those who are employed here and with low and moderate incomes. Retail cleaners, grocery clerks, hospital teachers aides. These are the people who provide what we now clearly know are essential services, and we would like to see them served. And thank you very much.
Thank you. We go now to Kim Donovan. And she should be on. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. And I live on Bush Street downtown and work on El Camino. And I realize that this is something that was set by the city in the RFQ, but I would like this to be considered in the proposals. And that is the parking situation downtown. In my opinion, we've had a long-term problem regarding parking, prior to the current emergency, of course. Of course, from my house, I'm fortunate enough to be able to walk downtown, but if I'm coming from my office or someplace else, I need to drive there. And time and time again have had real difficulties trying to park for a lunch meeting or dinner meeting, so much so that people say we can't meet in downtown Mountain View. Additionally, my husband's disabled, and trying to find disabled parking in downtown Mountain View is virtually impossible. I end up dropping him off, parking back at our home, walking, and then having to reverse after dinner. So I would like that to be considered, and in my experience, the situation has only worsened recently. In the last six months, again, prior to the crisis, cars have been parking on my street throughout the day, and it's made it increasingly difficult to be able to have friends and so on park near my home. I attribute part of that to the new project at St. Joseph's, and I think the situation will only worsen with the Wells Fargo project. The number of parking spots for 120 units ranged in these proposals, and this is pursuant to the RFQ, I understand, from 73 to 90. And here, the recommended project is the one with the least number of parking spots. And I understand that replacement of the surface parking is provided in all of the projects. However, based on the combination of residents and the community use, I think that the need for parking in the area will again be increased. I realize that the council and the community, many people believe that between technology and public transit, we'll have a decreased need for parking. But I think that that has been projected for a long time, and the reality that we've seen.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
No problem.
We go now to JH initials. And you should be on.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, so I'm a resident of the Quest Park neighborhood in Mountain View. I find it ironic that, you know, prior to this debate, we were considering, you know, raising old housing, old apartments, to put in expensive apartments that are townhouses that probably those residents won't be able to afford. As a homeowner in Mountain View, I feel that homeowners aren't being well represented here in terms of having our voices and concerns heard. We already have a very lax RV policy here that completely undermines Macon's law and other provisions that keep us safe. We have arguably the premium location of Mountain View where homes walking distance from the site that we're talking about, you know, run up to $2 million or more. And yet, of all locations, we're talking about putting affordable housing there. It just seems that it's not the right location. It doesn't make sense. Already today, it's difficult in that library area because of all the RVs and all the people using library services, library restrooms. It's already, it feels like there's an impact. And it doesn't seem like this is really the right place to be putting it. This is downtown Mountain View. It's an area where businesses reside, where people are trying to, taxpaying people are trying to conduct their business. And it just seems like it's completely ignoring the people who actually pay the bills, which are the homeowners who pay property taxes. I would echo also that we have teachers and public servants who cannot afford to live in this area. They're excluded from this. So, you know, I don't think that anybody should be getting a handout, but especially not people who just are not contributing to the tax base. And so those are the comments that I had. I feel that there needs to be more awareness for all homeowners in Mountain View because I don't think enough homeowners know about this. Thank you.
Thank you. And we go to Deanna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my first point is, I think we need to consider, I've heard all the comments, and really the proposals are all very nice. And thanks for the opportunity to share my comments, but I think I would like to emphasize on the parking issue. This location, Lot 12, is really one of the rare large property in downtown Mountain View. I think on the my hand, I fully support providing affordable housing. But I think at the same time, there's an opportunity for the City Council to request the parking component being paying special attention. For example, not only we would want to have 160 replacement parking, but maybe there's an opportunity to ask the developer to put more parking. So this is why I think I prefer the MidPen proposal because it does provide a parking structure easily visible to the public. And with the COVID-19 problems, there will be a need to help downtown businesses. And providing sufficient parking really will help those businesses. And at the same time, taking into consideration of providing affordable housing. So that's my point number one, which is if there's an opportunity, whoever we're working with, MidPen or somebody else, whether the City Council could provide incentive or something else, or putting some of its own money to provide more parking than the 160 that's required. And my second point is, I think having Mountain View residents being the affordable housing giving them a priority, I think it should be the starting line, starting point. We know, we've talked of displaced residents from the earlier discussion, as well as need to maintain housing for teachers, firefighters, you know, first-line grocery clerks. These are the people that work and live in Mountain View. They really should have priority for housing at this particular location. And I think that should not be really a discussion. This is an opportunity for the council to require that as a baseline, not a sort of discussion point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak here in the participant box? Please hit the raise hand button. I don't see anyone else. City Clerk, do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have one email that I'll read into the record that arrived after 5:00 PM. Dear, this is from Steve Chandler. Dear Councilmembers, regarding Item 6.1 for the selection of Lot 12 preferred development team, I want to strongly urge you that you choose a developer that has the best potential for protecting our city's most vulnerable and ensuring that there is a space for them to not only live but to prosper like many other families around us. Other neighbors need your help. Please choose the best developer for underprivileged Mountain View residents. Let's put priority on helping the low-income at-risk and homeless, houseless families. Sincerely yours, Steve Chandler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other public comments, so I will close public comment and bring it back to council. We've been going three hours, so I was going to suggest a break. If we can do five, well, 11:30, so six minutes. How's that? That work okay? All right, thank you. So we'll be back at 11:30. Um, so I was going to suggest if folks would like to make comments, that's fine. And then just go down.
I don't mind doing a quick round, but I'm not afraid to ask for a continuance. We've been at it this before. I don't want us to get to the point where we're making sausage and it's not the best sausage we can have. And we've seen this council, when they get tired, they're not the most coherent. So I'm a little concerned about taking maybe one round or so, but put a time limit on it, that if we're not there, we just continue it. For a continuance, so.
Okay, Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a different perspective. I think what gives me some comfort is there's a lot of flexibility even after developer selection. And we may not have to work out all of the nitty-gritty details today. I do have some thoughts I'd like to share. I'm comfortable with sort of going down the line. But I think rather than maybe focus too much on all of the parameters, you know, maybe there's a developer that we're comfortable with, we could proceed with that. And then when this comes back in the study session, we can maybe start working on some of the more granular detail.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I think a lot of elements are interchangeable, as we've heard. So tonight is really about picking the developer that we probably feel most comfortable working with. And I know that with other affordable housing projects, it takes many iterations and many study sessions moving forward as well to come to the final project. And I also, I remember with the Franklin Street Affordable Housing Project, especially because it was downtown, it took even more time and more considerations. So, you know, this is really the starting point. And I think tonight, if we could try to come up to a decision on a developer we'd like to work with, that would be ideal. I do appreciate Councilmember McAllister's comments too. So just want to get a sense from you all. You know, I don't know if we can reach consensus, but I'd like to give it a try. Thanks. Councilmember Madetrick?
Yeah, I'm hoping we can come to consensus on the, at least the developer. But, you know, I feel like I'd have comments about all of them in terms of changes, tweaks that I'd like to see. So to me, that's a more in-depth discussion that maybe, to Councilmember McAllister's point, maybe we don't have that part of the discussion tonight. But then again, I feel like we do need to provide that initial direction to any changes we might want to see to whichever developer we decide to work with.
Great. Any other comments? So I'm going to, Councilwoman Clark, yes.
It's more a question about process. So when you get on the line, are you going to want us to pick one? Are you going to want us to like rank them? Or say like the one or two that we like more? Or do you want us to just pick one and you only get one vote?
Yeah, I know that's hard to do, but I was actually hoping in the interest of time, we can pick our top and just see where that goes. And yeah, work from there.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Great, thanks. And appreciate Council-
Um, and appreciate Councilmember Clark asking. I was, I was a little bit, um, unsure, but I just, I know it's a late hour, but I do really wanna thank staff. I think that this was, um, you know, a really big task and really wanna thank Mr. Chen and staff for, um, providing the, the staff report that they did, all the additional materials and, um, um, outreach to us so that we can make the best decision that we can. And I just didn't want, even though the late hour, didn't want the, this time to pass without, uh, being sure to thank them.
Thank you, Councilmember Hicks.
So I would second that. We should, you know, not neglecting to, to thank staff for all the materials. I have to say, it's gonna, maybe I'll go last because for me, it's a dizzying array of options. As everything became more flexible, uh, I actually could work with any of the, any of the developers and, um, would like to, uh, like to at some point. I thought there were high points of each of them. Um, but my, my main criteria, because we're having, um, you know, because we've displaced so many residents recently because of the, um, you know, the pandemic probably displacing more people and then, uh, because of our, our aims to get, uh, RV residents off this, my main criteria, or one of my main criteria really is, is, is some, yeah, uh, funding mix that would allow us to serve those people. So with, and then also a good fit in this sort of special location. So with that as priorities, I, I have to say, with it being so flexible, I don't have a particular one that, uh, ends up, ends up shining as it all seems to be so flexible. So, um, I'll let others go first on that.
Thank you, Councilmember McAllister.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a stab. I'm gonna make a motion. So we'll see how it goes.
All right.
I make a motion that we pick the related Palo Alto Housing as the developer.
Councilmember Madetek? Thank you.
Well, I'll second that one. Then they were my top choice. Um, for me, what's most important is, um, having the ability to have 100% say on the preferences for who will be living there. Um, school districts, um, people who already live or work in Mountain View. And that's really important to me. And I'm concerned we don't have that amount of, um, control if we use Measure A funds.
Yeah, I could count on it, but, uh, my, they are my top, top choice. I think they'll do the best for the housing. You heard me talk about this is a community within a community, but we seem to be dividing that property up to many different deals. I think they come in with the best, uh, flexibility that, they also have a scenario three that we hadn't talked about. But I like the underground parking. I think the massing is one of the better massings because it's not the really large one. I like that it's tight with the nonprofits being able to supply jobs to those individuals that are on site. And it is, um, it's architecturally well. And to the point, a lot of people say, I feel comfortable working with Palo Alto Housing slash Mountain View wannabes, uh, project, and we feel comfortable with them. But again, they also aren't using Measure A. They give us the flexibility to take care of our Mountain View with local preference. And I think they're the total package. They're reasonable. Uh, and, uh, that's what I would, that's why I went with them.
Great, thank you. Any other, uh, so we do have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment on this? And we can just do it as a straw vote. Well, actually, why don't we just see how it goes? Um, I, any other comment on the motion? Yes, Councilmember Ramirez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm surprised we jumped into it so quickly. I, so I, this, this is challenging because all of the proposals are good. Um, I'd be, I'd be pretty happy with working with, with any of the developers, um, that have, uh, applied. I think, you know, my, my, the conclusion I'm coming to is, is based on the parameters of the RFP and, uh, the ability of each of the responders to adhere to those parameters. And I think I'm, I'm inclined to trust staff on this one. Uh, if they've determined that EAH was able to provide the most solid proposal, uh, the most realistic, um, you know, assumptions for, uh, development costs and for, you know, uh, realistic expectations for financing sources. Um, I'm, I'm, I would be more comfortable proceeding with, with, with them. Uh, the other thing that, that gives me a little bit of pause is the, uh, and I, I appreciate the creativity with, with prepaying a grounds lease, but it's not something that was in the RFP. And the concern I have, uh, that I shared with them, when, when I spoke with them was, you know, I, I don't, I, I feel like we're, we're trying to gain, or I feel like it could appear like there's, there's an attempt to game the system, right? Where, uh, we, when there isn't in the RFP, any land cost or, or, you know, significant ground lease cost for, for us to sort of create one, um, with an arbitrary, you know, price component that just so happens to be the cost to, you know, pay for the replacement parking. Um, I, I think would, would, would arouse some skepticism from some of the other external financing sources that them, that they might be looking at. Because it would appear that they're trying to convert a restricted financing source into city general fund revenue that would then be reinvested in public parking, which is not something that I think most of the financing sources would be able to do. And, uh, my, I, I don't know a lot about the EAH proposal for, for subsidize, for, for, um, for paying for the parking, but it sounded like based on staff's analysis, it was a, a more reasonable, um, and, and a more reasonable proposal with a higher probability of success. And I would hate to have this creative idea that's untested, especially when it doesn't exist in the RFP, only for it to not work out as intended. And then for us to just, you know, end up contributing more, more funding for, for, um, for the replacement parking. What the, the highest priority in my, in my mind is a highly leveraged, uh, project. Um, I don't want to sort of cut off our nose despite our face and, you know, um, in, in the pursuit of maximum local preference, even, you know, even if it means we're, we're sort of cutting off our opportunities for, for leveraging fund, funding sources. We may end up having enough funding down the road for the many other affordable housing development proposals in, in the pipeline. Um, so I'll, I'll be supporting EAH. Um, a lot of tweaks I'd like to make related to childcare and family units and that kind of thing. Um, but just sort of to get my perspective on, on this motion, I personally can't support it.
Could I just clarify something, uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm proposing the parking onsite. So the $10 million is tefacto. It's not part of the motion. So all the parking would be onsite and the $10 is muted. So if that will help clarify what you're thinking, uh, Councilmember Ramirez. So.
We're still paying for that. We're, we're playing, that, that's, that's the key thing about this proposal, right? The, the, the subsidy for the replacement parking onsite comes from this creative ground lease. And so if the ground lease works out, you know, that's fine. That means we've converted a restricted financing source into the general fund revenue that we could then use to subsidize the parking. But this isn't free parking. This, this is coming from, from a city subsidy that's generated from an external revenue source.
Can I get clarity from staff? Because I thought that was an option. If they build the parking themselves, there is no $10 million. But if they go offsite, the $10 million goes. So Wayne, could you clarify that for me, please?
Sure. Uh, thanks for the question. Uh, the, the three scenarios that related PAH, um, had, had included a ground lease payment in each of the three scenarios. And in each of the three scenarios, the, the, the ground lease payment, um, will come to the city and then the city can, can just put it back into the project, um, or, um, have it go offsite. Um, I, I would ask perhaps, um, Mr. Suda, if he, uh, would be able to clarify, um, whether there needs to be a ground lease payment and whether that payment can just simply stay in the project without having it come to the city? If council has direction of just keeping the, the replacement party onsite?
Mr. Suda, are you in our attendee box? Let's see. Yes. You should be on, Mr. Suda.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. It, it, I'm sorry, Wayne, uh, your, the audio on my end cut out in the middle of your, your question. So if you could repeat that.
Sure. The, the question was the ground lease payment exists in each of the three scenarios. Um, but, but is the development team open to the idea that if council directed, if, um, if related PH is the selected team and, uh, council just made a direction to, uh, keep the replacement parking onsite, whether the team could simply, uh, keep the payment in, in the project and not have a payment to the city?
Yeah, I think what we would need to do is, is work with our, uh, our funding sources to, to verify if this is an eligible source in the way you're describing that. I couldn't give you a definitive answer on that tonight. I mean, I think the takeaway is that, um, that we believe, and, and I, I believe and related believes that what we have, uh, put forth, um, it, it works, it's creative. It helps the city, uh, provide funding that will go towards offsetting the cost of the parking. That being said, if for some reason the council is not comfortable with that specific, uh, that specific approach that we've proposed, I would hope that you are comfortable with us as your trusted development partner, that we would sit down with you to come up with an alternate, an alternate approach, whether that's additional city money or some other type of funding source to, uh, bring to the table. But, you know, this, these are the conversations that, uh, we hope to have with the council in study session as we move forward.
Mr. Suda, if I could, um, follow up on that. Um, so the way I look at it is you pay the city and then the city just puts that back into your project. So it's actually a cost neutral situation similar to the other, um, proposals. Is that right? It's more just a funding mechanism for you to be able to leverage other funding sources.
That's correct. We, we see it as a, as a leverage opportunity. Um, and the, and, and the city, we see it as a leverage opportunity. The concept of an affordable housing developer needing to pay for land or needing to pay a ground lease happens all the time, right? It, the cost of the land is included in our Eagle Park and our 950 El Camino projects and many, many other affordable housing projects. So the idea of having funding, paying for the cost of land, that's well tested. You see it every day in your other affordable housing proposals. This is simply, uh, this is simply approaching it from the standpoint of a ground lease. Cause we know this is, this will be a land lease. It's not a purchase. So this is a lease payment rather than folding in the cost of the purchase price into the overall project cost.
So does that help in, um, terms of, um, borrowing funds? Um, is it an issue of carrying debt to be able to leverage financing?
Yeah, it's really, it's a question, it's a question of can we, uh, uh, of us being able to obtain out, funding from outside sources to, to apply to the project.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Suda or? No? Okay, thank.
Mayor, you're muted.
Councilmember Hicks?
So I did have a question. I, I could support the Palo Alto Housing related, uh, team as a developer if my one reservation was that the, uh, design looked very much like the project on, uh, the corner of El Camino and Church. So I was, I, and I did meet with all of the applicants except for Eden. Um, and when I, when I met, you had said you could, uh, get a, a consulting architect uh, to tweak it to look a little different. Would that still be something that would be possible? Because if that were possible, I could support it.
Mr. Suda, would you mind answering?
Yeah, the, the answer is yes. Whether it's through the use of the, a consulting architect and, and bringing in a second, basically a second opinion on the design, uh, as we indicated before, we would be willing to do that.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Um, I'm gonna go to Vice Mayor next.
Great, thank you. Um, so I, and, and this might be a question for Mr. Suda, I'm not sure. But so, um, for the Palo Alto Housing related projects, there's the three different scenarios. One of those scenarios does include, um, Measure A as a source. And so it, to the motion maker, was there openness to exploring the three different scenarios? Or are you just going for the, the preferred base scenario?
Scenario number one. I, we've heard so many comments from people today about housing Mountain View residents and the various, uh, very variety of their incomes. And so I think if we go with scenario one, would give us the most flexibility. And so that's what I'm looking for is flexibility to house as many Mountain View residents as we can. I also just wanna make a quick comment that, you know, Palo Alto Housing, we're working with them with our RD units over there on, uh, safe parking. So they've already proven to be good, uh, working neighbors with us. And so this could be a segue. We get something going here that they, we can improve and make something unique in the way we take care of housing our residents. So to your question simply, uh, I prefer scenario one.
Councilmember Clark?
I was just gonna say before we vote, whether it's a straw vote or, uh, or a more formal vote. Um, I, so, um, if Palo Alto Housing related, um, had a really great proposal, they weren't my top choice. Um, so, uh, but, you know, I, I, um, I also could live with them. I, um, I would be even more uncomfortable though if we start choosing scenarios tonight. Um, because I personally, you know, this is a project that isn't gonna come to fruition for four or five years. And we are going to have, um, housing allocations that come out, um, whether we like it or not next year. And my guess is that it's gonna be toughest for us to meet some of those lower, um, very low income. Um, that, that's where we've lagged before and I think what will be hardest for us to get to. And so I think I wouldn't, I wouldn't totally, um, exclude options for, um, Measure A funding. I know that everyone equates Measure A funding with, you know, rapid rehousing and, and things that not everyone, um, feels are maybe appropriate for this site. But I think there are other ways to utilize Measure A funding. It's a more, I think, stable source of funding than maybe some of the other options. And I think there are probably ways to utilize Measure A funding with, uh, without sort of the, you know, you end up with a county list and you have no input over it. I, and so if that ends up being the case, then that's one thing. But I, I think there are options there that we could explore to utilize that funding source. And so I wouldn't write it off at this stage. I think, um, I think we should, you know, chat through scenarios based on sort of the outcome that we want as opposed to sort of writing those off at the outset before we talk about the outcome details that we want. So, um, anyway, I, that, um, going with Palo Alto Housing related wouldn't be the end of the world for me, even though they're not my first choice. But if we're gonna get into, you know, picking and choosing scenarios and all those details, um, on, in the vote, then, um, then I'd, I'd, I'd prefer to discuss that at a later time.
Yes, so, um, I'm gonna go back to you, Councilmember McAllister, because, um, you, you also wanted to look at maybe continuing this. But, um, I think that if we can just pick a developer this evening and then and then discuss all of the other details in it at another meeting, I, I think that would be ideal, um, given where we are in this conversation, so, um.
I think that's fair. I mean, preference one is my first choice, but it was a preference. So to address Mr. Councilmember Clark, if we pick them, then yes, then we could get into the full disclosure, discussion.
Great. And, uh, Councilmember Maticek, what would you be, all right, with us just picking a developer this evening?
Yes, I think I said that before. Because I, I do have a lot of comments about, um, the project that I haven't shared.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, my short-term memory is kicking in. Um, and then I, I just wanted to offer, um, some comments. And first of all, I, I echo the thanks to staff. This was quite an undertaking and, um, I really appreciate the in-depth, um, staff report and the details of each project. Um, so thank you very much for all of your hard work. Um, I'm also very pleased that we were able to receive four, um, great projects. Um, I, I think they were very close and, and, you know, they all had their little flavors. But, um, I, I really am pleased that we had such high-quality proposals. For me, um, this is, I think, my biggest, um, interest here is the location being downtown. And, um, having had prior experience with the other downtown affordable housing project, um, I feel the importance of design is key, um, and also how it fits into our downtown neighborhood, uh, neighborhood. So in that regard, um, I, I think, and, and also in working with the other project, um, I think it's important to have a team that we can, we feel comfortable with. And, um, you know, I, I, I don't know EAH, I'll be honest, um, the other three I ha- we haven't, have had experience, so that was very helpful. Um, but overall, I, in terms of design and, uh, flexibility, um, and actually that's how I came, um, to the conclusion, uh, I think I might have had the opposite, um, conclusion as staff. I think staff liked the, the focused, um, you know, proposal. But in light of these times and the unpredictability that we are experiencing, I feel strongly that we need, uh, we need to be flexible and just see how things go, go. And I felt that, um, with Palo Alto Housing Related, we might have that opportunity to be flexible and nimble as we move forward. Um, with the other affordable housing project, we used a, um, private developer. Um, there was a, a, a little extra flair to that, I would say, I think, I, I, I personally think in terms of design. Um, so this joint project, a partnership was of interest to me as well, to see if we might be able to get a little extra something from that. Um, so for all of those reasons, um, I, uh, will be supporting this motion. And I have a few more comments, so, um, actually before we do that, I have City Attorney. Would you like some comments?
Yes, just a quick comment, and you were probably going in this direction anyway. It sounds like, uh, if the discussion is going towards a formal motion, just if the motion maker could include staff recommendations two and three, you don't need to read those, but the title of, number four, the title of the resolution would need to be read.
Great, thank you. Um, we'll do that maybe at, at the end when we go back to the motion. So Councilmember Clark?
That's actually what I was gonna address. I was gonna say, I was gonna make a suggestion and say maybe what you do is a straw vote on the, on choosing the applicant or the developer. And then, and then John, you know, based on that outcome, then John can make the, the motion. If, if there are four votes for that, then John can make the formal motion and, and read, uh, the item four, which is the appropriation. And then maybe, maybe once we all have a sense of whether or not there's four votes for Palo Alto Housing, you know, you may end up getting more people for the, for the final motion, um.
Great, thank you for this suggestion. We'll do that. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, and, uh, I, so, I, I, I was kind of reading for both for, for Palo Alto Housing. Um, and I guess, um, I'll, I'll, I'll support the motion. I appreciate, um, the maker of the motion's consideration of, uh, of scenario two, or at least not, not limiting ourselves to one scenario and being flexible on the, the financing sources. So that, that, that means a lot to me. The only other thing I would suggest is if we can, um, allow for flexibility on some of the other parameters of the proposal. And, and so in, in my mind, again, um, anything that would allow for, um, leveraging other sources of funding, so if we, if we have to explore other, other tweaks, you know, and, and in particular, the thing, and the, the two in my mind that, that are, that would be the most significant are, if, if it makes the project more competitive for certain financing sources, if we look at, you know, going above one hundred and twenty units. Um, and then, you know, again, if the parking scenario doesn't work out, uh, because that could end up being a significant city subsidy, that we also look at, at alternative considerations there. Again, if it helps, um, keep the project competitive for external, uh, funding sources. I just, you know, I, I would hate to, I mean, the, the subsidies that are, uh, proposed per unit are, are really encouraging. You know, I was, I pulled up an earlier document that shows the subsidies per unit for a lot of other projects that were approved, and, uh, they're significantly higher. So I would, I wanna do everything we can to keep the subsidies lows, uh, low, so that way we can, um, you know, use the, the, the very valuable funds that we have to get all of the other projects in the pipeline through. Um, so if, if that's a, a consideration that we can, we can, um, allow for, I, I'd really appreciate that. And the final thing too is, you know, again, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, get too, too nitty-gritty, but there were a lot of really amazing things about a lot of these proposals. So I have a preference for family units, for instance, I have a preference for, uh, childcare, uh, in the, the commercial, uh, space. And I, I really hope that, that's something we could focus on here. Um, and, uh, and just sort of appreciation for, for maintaining, uh, deep levels of affordability. I, I, I kind of see this as part of our exit strategy for the Safe Parking Pilot Program. I mean, the, that's not gonna be around forever. Uh, the downtown emergency shelter, um, has, uh, has a fixed timeframe and we, we need to be prepared, you know? So where do those folks land? Hopefully, you know, downtown Lot Twelve or the, the Evelyn Project. Um, and so, so making sure that we're, we're still targeting the, the lowest levels, the levels of affordability is, is really important to me. Um, but I've come around, I'll support the motion, uh, and I, I really appreciate the, the allowance for flexibility.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Great, thank you. Um, my colleagues have summed this up so nicely. Um, so I'll, I'll try to be brief, which is, um, the Palo Alto Housing Related, um, proposal was one of the, one of my top, um, between another. And, um, what I like, you know, similar to what the mayor was saying, was the, the flexibility in terms of what was proposed, but also in working with council and in our vision for that area. Lot Twelve is a really special part within our downtown community. Um, and I particularly thought, uh, the design elements in terms of the, the placemaking and kind of the linear walking path was pretty thoughtful in terms of not only being a buffer between the existing housing on the, the backside, but also how you might be able to walk to, um, the library or to City Hall and, and really create a, a sense of place and some activation. I think that all of the projects had, you know, interesting elements that were appealing. And, um, similar to Councilmember Ramirez said, and, um, you know, I'd like to be able to discuss some changes. I do agree that I would like the flexibility in terms of exploring the different scenarios that were put forward as well as, um, the element of having childcare, uh, on-site. Um, and one of the things, um, that was Palo Alto Housing and Related mentioned to me was, um, the ability to increase the square footage in terms of, uh, uh, uses. So, um, I know that the proposal had, I think, nearly five thousand, but that there was, you know, additional, maybe two or three thousand square feet, uh, with which we could work to activate and really looking for that community space within our downtown, which I know we're going to need as, as we're changing and we're growing. So, um, I'll be supporting the motion now that, uh, Councilor, um, McAllister has made that change. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, yeah, I would just reiterate that, that again, tonight I was expecting to just pick the developer and it's, there's, I'm interested in the childcare center, I'd like to see family units. I would actually like to talk more about the parking piece because I'd like to see, you know, what would be the best in terms of leveraging financing and getting parking up and running as quickly as possible. Um, you know, my expectation is, and of course with shelter in place, things are changing, but, um, you know, we will be talking about closing Castro Street for a pilot program. Should that be successful, we would have to look at where the, where we get, we taking off the parking there on Castro Street and where we're gonna put it. So, um, I think, you know, someone was saying, complaining that we were talking about parking so much, but it is right now a parking lot and we have to figure out how we're gonna replace those spaces, at least for the short term. And so, um, that's a very important part of this, uh, project, I believe. So I hope that we can have a more in-depth discussion on how we're gonna replace the parking and then, you know, if we can even add some. So with that, um, I'll go ahead and take a straw vote, so.
Mayor, Mayor, we do have, uh, I can count to five. Uh, I'd rather just make a formal motion because I've, I've noticed, we've had so many people say they support it, so.
Great, if you'd like to call the question, that's fine, but could you then add the, um, read the items from the script that we need to read? Thank you, great.
Um, okay, so, uh, the first one that, the, the motion says that the Related Palo Alto Housing will be the, uh, developer for the mixed-use, for the, the, for the Lot Twelve residential slash mixed-use development. Authorize the city manager or her designate to execute an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with the selected del- development team and commence negotiation process for development of Lot Twelve. Authorize the city manager or her designate to execute amendment to the exclusive right to negotiate agreement to extend the term for an additional sixty days if negotiations are completed but are progressing. Adopt a resolution reserving one hundred, whoop, one million dollars from the Lower and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund to assist in the development of affordable housing on Lot Twelve, be read in title only. Further reading, further reading waived.
Councilmember Clark?
John, can you just clarify in one that, um, we're selecting Palo Alto Related as the, the preferred development team, um, but not actually formally making them the development team yet? They're just moving to the next phase, yeah, okay.
Okay, that, the Related Palo Alto Housing has been selected as the preferred development team for Lot Twelve Residential slash Mixed Use Development.
Great, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Maticek, do you second that motion?
I do.
Great, thank you very much. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? If not, can we get a roll call vote, please, City?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Council?
I, you're breaking it up, so, I, I.
Councilmember McAllister?
Oh, oh, yes, uh, uh, of course, I think, uh, yes, I, I think so, yes, 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 yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Mayor Abicoga?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion passes seven zero with no abstentions. Thank you very much. Thank you to staff again, and thank you to all of the development team members, um, for your presentations and your proposals. So this concludes, uh, items. We, I need to, uh, I guess I need to, um, take a motion, a vote on ex- extending past ten P M. We just have council reports to do, so I'll make a motion to continue. Thank you, Councilmember Maticek. Second, any discussion on that? I guess we have to do a roll call vote on this.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
For consistency, no.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Mayor Abicoga?
Aye, motion passes six one with no abstentions. McAllister's opposing, opposing. Thank you. So, are there any, uh, council member reports or some comments? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Great, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to share, so the counties of San Mateo and Santa Clara County are co-hosting a Tell Town Hall tomorrow in Spanish. Um, it's gonna be with Unavision, and, um, I have shared the information with our city manager and hoping that the, the city can participate as well, um, but just wanted to, to share. It, um, is at eight P M.
Yeah.
And if you go to facebook.com slash SCC Census, you can respond to the event.
Great, thank you. Any other staff or coun- I'm sorry, council reports? I actually have a few, um, and please bear with me, but it's all good news, so most of it is good news, um, from the VTA Policy Advisory Committee, and I know Councilmember McAllister will see this next, but, uh, many of our projects, um, moved forward in the funding process, and that included the Castro Street grade separation project, um, the Stevens Creek Trail next, uh, phase extension, and the, and the real, real lane improved, bike lane improvements. Um, so, uh, that was exciting to see several of our projects. The El Camino project actually scored the highest, um, I think that was part of the BTP twenty fifty plan. So very exciting to see our projects moving forward. And then from the Silicon Valley Clean Energy side, um, we, the board met and, uh, voted to create ten million, a ten million dollar fund for COVID relief programs. And this will be in three categories, a customer relief bill credits. Every, uh, individual will get a hundred dollar bill credit if they are a CARE or FARA, the Low Income Program, um, customers. And, uh, there will be a two hundred and fifty dollar bill credit for up to four thousand qualifying small business customers in our service area. We also, um, are going to create a workforce relief fund, one point five million to provide immediate financial relief to the contractor workforce and expand awareness of electrification technology through training. So we're creating these training programs, and if you, if you go through that, then you'll get a, um, I think up to five hundred dollars at the end. Um, and then we also will be, uh, creating a community energy resiliency fund of five million dollars to member agencies. That means the cities and the county that are part of, um, SVCE. And this is to provide project support that increases resiliency in local communities to deal, deal with the PSPS events. So if our city, uh, has a resiliency project, we will get funding for that, and that's gonna be divided up, um, by our, um, our service, our, our, our size. And for Mountain View, total with all of these three projects, uh, programs, we should be seeing over a million dollars coming back to our city. So, um, that's pretty good news. Um, we did do a mid-year budget review and, uh, we approved a, a four percent rate discount from PG&E. Um, and then, and then the, the resiliency or the, um, COVID relief fund programs. And we also, uh, approved another twenty-year solar plus storage contract with Next Era Energy. And this is to continue to, um, fulfill our, uh, our, um, requirements for more, uh, renewable energy sources. So, um, that's exciting, exciting news. And then I did attend the Cities Association, uh, we had the Legislative Action Committee where we took an opposed position on AB twelve seventy-nine. That was, that's the, um, Bloom Bill that calls for high-resourced areas to increase housing opportunities. Um, and then, uh, we had a selection community, committee meeting, and I want to congratulate, uh, Councilmember Maticek for being reappointed to the Airport Land Use Commission. And, um, those were, yeah, those were the main items. And then finally, um, you may have heard, and I know it's been in the paper, uh, we continue to have our mayor's call with, um, County Supervisor Chavez, uh, every Saturday morning now to talk about testing. And they are exploring a testing, a mobile testing site in Mountain View, um, where we apparently have s- some hotspots in the North Ringstorf neighborhood. Um, so I know our city manager's been working with county staff on the details of that. So, um, we should be hearing more details soon. Thank you. And Councilmember McAllister?
Are they gonna, is anybody gonna do an antibody test or are they all just doing the viral test?
Um, they're, they're all viral at this time, although Stanford does offer the antibody test. Um, it, it, I, I'm a patient there and I was offered one. I, I did have a test for the regular test. And they're really pushing the regular test, um, not so much the antibody test, but some facility for it. You're muted.
Help again.
You're muted, Margaret? I'm sorry. Uh, City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
There's no closed session report tonight.
Great, thank you. So then we adjourned at twelve sixteen A M. And, uh, we are still trying to pick a date for our next city council meeting, so I won't announce that date just yet. But thank you all. Um, thank you for hanging in there and have a great evening or morning. Take care.